Okay, thank you for your patience. Sorry we ran a little bit over. We're coming back from executive session. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hi, you want to start us off with the mission and vision?
FSP mission, the Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. FPS vision, Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you so much. In accordance with Mass Open Meeting Law, I remind everyone the meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of the meeting in person or online, please notify me by raising your hand in person or remote and state your name and the purpose of your recording. Anyone recording? Okay. Student Advisory, thanks for coming again. You're on a roll. You've been like, you haven't missed a meeting in I don't know how long. So thank you so much. What can you share with us?
The FPS Falmouth Health Fair takes place March 27. Nurses connect with students and families with educational materials, immunizations, and healthcare resources. There will also be student presentations and prizes there. And then the science fair happens this weekend in the Field House, and that's for K through 12 students, and it showcases their steam-based projects. It's probably very exciting. And then similarly, the robotics team this past weekend had their first competition, and they placed third, which is very impressive.
That's awesome.
And awesome. And then Thursday, we have the Shamrock Bowl at the high school, and it's a dodgeball tournament. So hopefully we have a lot of people involved in that. It'll be fun. Stamp testing has been going on this week and last week, giving language students opportunity to get their seal of by literacy. A service academy information night will be held for juniors in the next few weeks for them and their families to learn about that as an option after graduation. Spring sports trads start Monday, and the good weather, so hopefully that'll be nice in the last. Senior art shows tomorrow after school, and they highlight a group of students, and they highlight all their work. And then also with stacks, and I'm always very impressed. They're always really, really good. So hopefully a lot of people stop in to see that. Another one is Soup for the Soul fundraising night for ceramics. The bowls are made by the ceramic students and the soup by the culinary students. So it's $20, and it always sells out. It's a huge fundraiser that's always very popular. So that is March 20. And then similar to the senior art show, there will be artwork and literature pieces shown at the Nomsville White Housekeeper, and that'll be on March 27, and it's open to the public.
Awesome. That's a lot of stuff. Thank you. Mike, everybody wants to talk.
You have an online auction as well, right?
For Soup for the Soul.
No, the senior class. I saw there was an online auction.
Yes, there essentially.
Good to give it a shout out.
I was wondering, did you go to or talk to anybody? Did the challenge day?
Yes.
Did you do it?
I didn't do it, but a lot of my friends did. Everyone really, really enjoyed it.
Wasn't it blow out of the water fantastic?
That's what I heard, yes.
Yeah. Do you know anything about it?
I know it was very like, everyone, all their phones were gone for the whole entire day. So it was very safe space, and they wanted people to open up or be able to and feel comfortable. And I heard, or one of our teachers explained a little recap, and she said in the beginning that some people weren't really into it, and they just signed up for it because they wanted to miss class. But by the end of it, every person was really like bought in and really enjoyed it.
I appreciate that honesty, though.
I went to it, and I just didn't want to prejudice, and you would say, it was fantastic. It was, that's what I thought first, too, that kids always stayed out of school, you know. But by the end, even everyone was involved. There wasn't a person who wasn't really engaged. And it's just, there are procedures to get people to share experiences, to let other people, you're not alone in your battles. Or it was just phenomenal what they did. Like, can I just say one thing? I put a masking tape down the middle of the gym, and they said, everyone who has someone in your family with a drug problem, walk across, everyone was silent. And it was glad you said about the phones, too. Everyone walked across, everyone who had that walked across the line, and no one's saying anything. You just saw. And then they would say, do you feel pressured from your parents to get good grades? And does that, is it troublesome? And people, just people walking across the line, and you looked and you saw that you weren't alone in these things. And it's part of the hope, I mean, the, the, what is it? No, it's part of the, it's part of the program for kids that it was Hope Squad. Yes, part of the Hope Squad thing. So it's just teaching techniques to tune into people you might notice having troubles. But it was very intense, but very rewarding. So I wanted to give a shout out to the Hope Squad, who got the speakers. Anyway, it was one of the best things this year, I think. Don't you?
Yeah, I hope they bring it back next year, too.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. There were 100 kids, you know. So they want, they would like to open it up to a lot more, obviously. But you need, you need more adults to do it, to volunteer to. Anyway, so it's really great.
Oh, thank you. And thank you. And you didn't mention trivia night? On Friday at 7:00.
There's too many things.
There will be a trivia night. People get a table for six. If anybody wants to join my table, I can use one more person. Our table for 12, okay. And also, there's only 23 more tickets left for Soup for the Soul.
Oh, my gosh.
Because I have two here. So, and they're not at eight cousins. So if anybody wants them, you have to get them from the high school.
Yeah, it always sells out.
Yeah, well, it's 23 more tickets. That's all.
I believe it. Questions? Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length, and due to open meeting law, the committee cannot act on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. An additional comments and feedback can always be sent to our email at schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. And I just want to point out that we do have the NASDAQ report later on in our, in our agenda, as grants are also later in the agenda. But I want to just address from the start that it was not my intention to take public comment on the NASDAQ report, because we already have the online version for questions, and we also have the public forum. I wanted the committee to have a chance to talk about it amongst ourselves. And so that was the intent of this agenda, as long as there's no objections. I just don't want people to sit thinking they were going to get to say something and then not be able to. Okay, public comment? Come on up.
Hi. I'm Hannah Fisher in Precinct 1, and I'm also a member of the Falmouth Task Force for Workers and Families. And I'm here to promote an event that I think might be interesting to all of you and some parents in Falmouth this Saturday, March 15, from 10:30 in the morning to 12:30 PM. We're hosting a community roundtable for families and childcare. And the goal of this roundtable discussion with families and childcare providers and educators is to just talk about some of the challenges facing families in Falmouth specifically related to maternal and pediatric healthcare needs, access and availability to childcare, access to education and recreational spaces. And so all of you are welcome to attend. If I didn't say it, it's in the Herman Foundation Room in the basement of the Falmouth Public Library on Main Street.
Saturday, 10:30.
Yep, 10:30. Yeah, I know it conflicts with the science fair. So I know that's a bummer on our end. But yeah, we hope to see people who can make it. Yeah.
Can I ask if people have to register?
No, no, well, we have RSVP. I actually emailed you just a little bit ago with a flyer with an RSVP, but you don't need to RSVP. And also importantly, people are welcome to bring their children to the event as well. We'll have coloring books and snacks and some games, too. So, yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Any other public comment? Come on up.
My name is Andrea Matos, and I have, I'm in Precinct 1, and I have three boys in the education system. And I despise public reading, so I, or public speaking.
You're in good company.
Well, unfortunately, I came to the meeting because I feel that I can no longer advocate quietly for my children in regards to bus transportation. And I want to highlight two incidents that took place for me this year. On September 20, my nine-year-old son broke his femur during soccer practice, and he was whisked by ambulance to Boston Children's Hospital. The cause of the break was a non-ostifying tumor and required elaborate surgery. It took our family three weeks to recover from the traumatic experience, which is when I reached out to head of transportation, Mr. Adrian Malloy, to set up a handicap bus for my wheelchair-bound child. In short, he told me there wasn't much he could do for me, because the buses were already in use, and suggested that I get a second wheelchair for the school. My most recent incident coincided with the detour on Surf Drive, diverting traffic down my road. I spent two and a half weeks, assuming our frenetic morning routine was caused from missing the bus, but it was not. Without explanation, the bus stopped coming to our house. The bus company was contacted, and the error was fixed. That afternoon, I received a voicemail from Mr. Malloy, saying the bus would not be picking up my children until the detour ended, because it was too difficult for the bus driver to turn around. The detour ended, and the bus still didn't come. I contacted Mr. Dart and Ms. Reed for assistance. It was only then that the bus came, but only after a week. It really sickens me to think that placing convenience and scheduling ahead of a child's safety is a priority. In the end, the worst-case scenario for the district is a lawsuit, but for me, it would be the loss of a child.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
And I'm sorry, I'm not going to stay the whole night.
Oh, no, I'm not worried. Thanks for coming. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Are you still doing the 15-second warning thing?
Yes.
My name is Amanda McGonigal. I sit before you tonight with a simple yet vital request, to take a vote to eliminate the navigating future, navigating the future proposals and start fresh. The rationale is clear. We've all recently seen external reports, and not one of the eight options presented recommends merging just two schools. That in and of itself highlights a major flaw in the process that brought us here. How can we make informed, reasonable decisions if the foundation of these proposals fail to align with best practices or rival recommendations? We can all agree that this process could have been handled differently from the start. Imagine where we would be today if a building needs task force had been formed at the very beginning. What if teacher, staff, family, and community forums have been conducted to bring forward their invaluable insights? I know many of you share the same concerns as our community. Parents are worried about school consolidation, which could compromise the quality of education for their children. Teachers fear losing their jobs or being stretched even thinner than they already are. And the long-term impact on our students' learning environment remains an unsettling unknown. This is your chance to take a step back, not as a sign of failure, but as a demonstration of leadership, reflection, and a commitment to doing what's right. By voting to eliminate these proposals, you have an opportunity to regain some of the trust that you've lost. Saying that we can do better is not a weakness, it is a strength. I ask you to consider alternative solutions, restart the process with full transparency and engagement, hear from teachers, staff, families, and community members, explore new options, begin to have important conversations with all stakeholders. I realize you cannot react or act to public comment, but I also know that this is a creative bunch, and I'm sure you could come up with an alternative language to bring forth tonight that does not reflect my exact words and violate open meeting law. I also know that if one of you were to bring forward a vote like this, that you'll be pleasantly surprised at the support you have from your fellow school committee members. This is your chance to make things right. By taking a vote tonight to eliminate the proposals, you are not just hitting the reset button on a flawed process, you're opening the door to a better future. One where every teacher, every staff member, every family has a seat at the table. Our children deserve better, our families deserve better, our teachers who dedicate their lives to our children deserve better, and you have a chance to lead us there. Vote to remove the proposals, word it in whatever crafty way we need to, and let's begin again together. Thank you.
Rachel Russell. So we cannot speak anything grant-related?
Right, because we have a number of grant items on our agenda.
If anything pertains to what I spoke about, I would appreciate the opportunity to speak on it in regard to anything I personally said at a meeting that's relative. So on the agenda as well, Kelly, is special education funding. So that's not open to discuss the event, because I was going to speak on the article for the town meeting in April.
Oh, that's not on our agenda.
So I can speak on that? Okay. Raquel Russell.
Hi.
I really encourage the school committee to get an external independent audit of the school's finances done. This practice is actually done routinely with a lot of districts every year. So like, every year, we do have the town and the DESI audit that are required, but that is not a thorough audit. And I did get the records from Sharon Reed. There has not been an external audit conducted, at least within the past seven years. And I feel that's important, because we are once again going to the town to ask them to give us funds from the out-of, hold on, I don't want to screw it up, the out-of-district Special Education Tuition Stabilization Fund, which was established in 2015, and last year it was the first year it was utilized. So last year, the district received $825,000 out of that fund. We are again going back to the taxpayers in April for another $300,000. This will essentially wipe out, close to wipe out that fund. So a business practice from my experience would be going to the town to replenish that money probably in November or sometime shortly thereafter. This is an important fund. It is for out-of-district special education. So what that tells me in the past year and a half or so, out-of-district costs have gone up one, over a million dollars, and that needs to be looked at. We've also had four different finance directors since 2022, and I'm sure they've all done a fine job and left for their own reasons. Paul Dart is still here. But with that tight turnover comes different methods and methodology of doing things, right? With reclassifications, which I never got a response on that question from back in October.
Thank you.
But it's important to have the finances looked at before we go to the town for more money. Thanks.
Anyone else? Oh, sure. If you just want to send it in. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah Bogdan. Good evening. I sit before you tonight to highlight the importance of building trust within our community. But I'd like to focus particularly on strengthening the partnership between Falmouth Public Schools and private daycare providers. These businesses are essential to our community, providing high-quality, early childhood education that prepares children for kindergarten. It is not and never should be the intention of Falmouth Public Schools to hurt private daycare providers. Instead, we should be working together to support families and ensure a smooth transition for children entering our school system. Private daycare offers foundational learning experiences that help children develop socially, emotionally, and academically. By fostering collaboration rather than competition, we can create a seamless transition from daycare to kindergarten, ensuring consistency in learning, reducing stress for families, and better preparing our students. A strong partnership benefits everyone. Private businesses remain respected and supported. Educators can share the best practices. Families receive clearer guidance about what to expect. To move forward, I encourage this committee to establish regular communication to private daycare providers, host collaborative workshops, and ensure that policies respect and support these businesses rather than create unintended barriers. By working together, we strengthen not only our schools, but our entire community. Let's build bridges and not barriers.
Thank you. We'll move on. The presentation by CPAC, Lori.
Yes, so once a year, usually sometime between March and June, we have a presentation from the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee Chair, and it's focused on the work of the advisory committee. I'm going to turn it over just to Sandy, Captain Bellis, now the Director of Student Services. Unfortunately, our chair was unable to make it, but Sandy's going to give a presentation tonight.
So unfortunately, Teri Els Hunter, who is our president of the CPAC, last minute was not able to make it tonight. So we do have a copy of her presentation slides in the packet, and I'll just go over a few of them. I know she probably had more details, but I'm not sure exactly what she was going to share. So I think she just wanted to kind of explain what CPAC was, again, the world of acronyms for special education. So in Massachusetts, CPAC stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council. It's a state-mandated district-level parent organization designed to support families of children with disabilities and to assure that they have a voice in the special education process. So we really like to focus on providing educational opportunities for our community on topics related to special education. So we plan out, Teri and I have planned out our meetings for the school year approximately once a month, and we post those dates on the school website. The meetings are all virtual, so there's a Zoom link. They begin at 6:30 if anybody is interested. We do send out communication on the topics as well. Another slide there, Teri just shared kind of since 2021, when she first became the CPAC president, and now some of the things that she has accomplished. She also listed the workshops that we've offered this year. So we started off the year working with the Federation for Children with Special Needs, and this was a great opportunity for everyone who tuned in to hear about the new IEP. So we changed our, some of our processes this year, some of the paperwork. And so that was a great opportunity for families to learn a little bit more about that. Teri presented a presentation to all of us called Rental Stress and Trauma with a lot of resources. We had a presentation from CORD, which is the CAPE organization for the rights of the disabled. This is an organization that's actually located on the Cape in Hyannis, Free Services, and they work with families to help their students or their children with work readiness programs, internships, job exploration. They have workshops like Dressing for Success, help with resumes, job applications, budgeting, so a lot of, lot of things that would be very important for those transitioning into a work life. And then we listed a few of the other programs that we're going to be offering for the rest of this school year. And then there was a little, another slide about defining the IEP and what that means for families focusing on the individualized education program, that it's a collaborative process where the parents and educators and specialists all come together to create and review a plan tailored to the students' unique educational needs. So there was an explanation of what the parents can expect to be as part of the IEP meeting and how to, I think, to help the members of the team make sure that the parents and the families feel included as part of the team. And I think there was one more slide that I could probably comment on, which is the future of CPAC. I really look forward to increasing our membership. Right now, we don't have a lot of people that tune in to our meetings, but I really do look forward to gaining more feedback from the community and some topics that people would like to attend. I don't know if anybody has any questions about CPAC?
Yes.
Good job, Sandy. Can we invite Teri back when she can make it to do the other slides? Because Sandy did a great job.
Thank you for pinch hitting.
Fantastic. And I can go over some of these talking to Teri, but I don't want to, because it's Teri's words. So if we could, no offense, Sandy, but if we can invite Teri another time, March through June, or whatever it is. That's my own question.
Yeah, we can try to reach out to her.
Thank you.
Questions? I thought I started your hand.
What is Vision of the Community? I said the 2021, that was not invitation to be there, but I don't know what that is.
Where are we?
Page two.
Through the years, okay.
That's, I believe, I'm not 100%, but I believe that's an organization that she was asked to come to and speak at. There was workshops, and she presented.
I think it's a state thing.
No, I think it was, yes, a state organization.
It's a virtual disability conference, off the top of my head.
Any other questions? Thanks for pinching. We appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, next, first read on the busing contract.
All right. So every three to five years, we go out to bid for the school bus contract. We usually have a three-plus-two, meaning a three-year contract, and then the school committee has a two-year additional option. But we have to go out every five years. So our current company, bus company, is Lucini, and they have been with us for five years. This is their fifth year. So Paul oversaw a process to go out to bid and for, you know, the next three to five years. So I will turn it over to Paul, so you can go over our recommendation for the next three-plus-two-year contract.
As you have in the package, you have the recommendation from Alliance Education, which was our advisor in the process of the bidding for the bus contract. Alliance has worked with us with the school system in the past, in the previous contract as well. So the recommendation, we had two bidders, as Lori mentioned, Lucini, our current contractor, as well as Mercedes Cab doing business at Cape Town Destination. The recommendation by Rich Labrie from Alliance Education is to go with Lucini again for another contract of three-plus-two years. And then in the rationale, it's not just an economic rationale. There were concerns about the reasonableness and the responsiveness of the Mercedes cab bid. They did not, for example, have three contracts with three districts for more than 10 buses. That's one of the key examples, and that was one of the requirements that we had set under the bidding process. There were also concerns, I mentioned, about a number of bus drivers, that they'd be able to hire, and a number of buses, they'd be able to require to buy in order to fill this contract. So with that, with the summation of all of this, the recommendation from both Alliance Education Associates and for myself is go with Lucini.
So we will vote on this at the next meeting, so on March 25. So if you have any questions now or any time in between, you know, I encourage you to reach out for questions.
I was just a procedural, I think, question first. So I loved all of this information. I thought it was really helpful to have a better understanding of, you know, oh, Lucini rose to the top. When we vote, do we vote, and I apologize, it's been five years, I don't remember, do we vote on the actual, like, will we get the actual contract and have to review that, or do we just vote on selecting Lucini?
That's right.
Just the second part.
And then, okay, vote for it, then the contract's created.
Okay, that's, I wasn't sure how, oh, we actually make the vote first, then the contract. Okay, thank you. We don't do this very often, so I just want to make sure I understand it. Mike?
All right. So Paul, this is all about the bidding process and why the other place was not suitable. This is good. Lucini, I had no problem with Lucini, they've been doing it. My only question I've asked several times is about the GPS systems.
Right.
The parents keep asking me, can we get, you know, last year, buses were running 10, 15, half an hour late at times. The parents had asked, not necessarily a personal GPS system, but something to the administration where we could go in and see where the buses were. Is that something that was discussed?
That is, it's something that's definitely been discussed and is coming down the road. So two factors that is the underlying software that we're using ourselves internally is being upgraded. That process started last, when we entered a contract with the software provider. I think it was around September. But then we're starting, as we roll out, we're going to be, and the software is putting in place, we're going to be having the trackers on the bus and the ability to notify parents. and the ability to notify parents.
So if I could, currently, does the head of transportation know where the buses are? Or does Lucini headquarters know where the buses are? Or is that, like, nobody knows where the buses are?
No, well, no, they both know where the buses are. And the software will be able to track those buses live. And you'll be able to, eventually, as a parent, you'll be able to track where the buses.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was going to ask. So thank you so much, Paul.
That would be very cool. Any other questions on busing? All right, thanks, Paul. Oh, you're, you're going to be up next. Yep, so next up is update from the business office.
Yes, so before Paul begins his update, I'd like to share some information. Share some information as an introduction to his first report on federal grants. On February twenty sixth, Governor Healy and Attorney General Campbell issued a memo. I would like to read excerpts from this memo because it's gone with public school very much in line with the state including the Department of Elementary and Secucaation. So the, first, I'm just going to start out in the memo, it says, "Educational institutions should continue to foster diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility among their student bodies. Existing law and well-established legal principles that encourage and even require schools to promote educational opportunity for students of all backgrounds. Practices and programs that promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility confer important educational and social benefits for students. They foster learning environments that provide all students an equal opportunity to learn and better prepare students to work in our diverse country and participate in our multicultural democracy. They are essential to promoting fair treatment and eliminating stigmatization." "It is imperative that the Commonwealth K twelve schools maintain and strengthen efforts to prepare all students for college and careers, including students from historically underrepresented backgrounds who are disproportionately students of color. This may mean taking targeted actions so that students from underserved communities, including communities of color, are aware of, have access to, and participate in these courses and programs. K twelve schools should continue to take affirmative steps to create and maintain a positive school climate where all students feel safe, supported, respected, and ready to learn. The school's responsibilities under these laws include: Review curriculum to ensure that it promotes tolerance and does not perpetuate discriminatory or demeaning stereotypes. Provide students at all grade levels with needed skills, knowledge, and strategies through evidence-based bullying prevention curriculum. Develop and implement plans to support and protect students who are vulnerable to becoming targets of bullying and harassment because of their race, color, religion, natural origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, or disability, among other identifying characteristics. Prohibit students from engaging in bullying or harassing and prescribe disciplinary measures that may be imposed for violations. Implement comprehensive policies and procedures for reporting, investigating, and responding to bullying and harassment. And train administrators, teachers, and school staff to successfully implement bullying and anti-harassment policies and procedures. And as I said when I started, very much in lines with the very work that we do here in Falmouth Public Schools. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and probably the most important, belonging is embedded in everything we do in Falmouth Public Schools. We truly believe every child, whether special needs, multilingual learners, athletes, high achievers, artists, struggling readers, advanced mass students, students who practice any religion or no religion at all. Students, however they identify, and students from every culture belong in Falmouth Public Schools. Every single student, every single day. We are committed to meeting the needs and expectations of every student. We must continue to create a safe and supportive school environment so every student can access their learning and thrive in school and beyond. We will stay the course for every student in our district.
Thank you. Paul?
So over the past few months, I've been in discussions, in any discussions revolving around the budget. I've been talking about the impact of the potential loss of grants. Should Washington eliminate the federal grants for education? So we have roughly one point six three million in grants today. We, you know, if things were to continue as normal, we expected that in our budget for fiscal year twenty six. However, if those grants are cut, and if they were brought to zero, the budget impact, the increase in the budget that we would need to offset that loss of grants would cause our budget request to go from five point five percent to eight point three percent. So it has a real impact on, on the, you know, the town if we were to lose these grants. And let, let, you know, there was a statement by Governor Healy that if Massachusetts and the school districts of Massachusetts were to lose these grants, which were total of roughly sixteen billion for this state, the state would be incapable of making up that difference. All right, so it's, it's, it's a real issue that we want to bring to the table. And in, in the talk that we see coming out of Washington, it really focuses on a couple things. One is obviously, you know, hearing the news, you can hear the discussions about the goal of eliminating the Department of Education as a whole. There's a talk of shifting the grant structures within, now in place with the Department of Education, put, spreading it out amongst different agencies and having block grants to the state. The, the theory here is that part of that money may not go to the same causes that such as special education, such as low income reading and math comprehension, that it would go into the form of tax credit for private school tuition. So going to this block grant format is, it is, may not be beneficial for public school districts across, across the country. The third other component is the linkage of, of the elimination of DEI in the schools. And again, I'm going to be taking a view here. This has just been what's spoken about from Washington. And, and, and if that, if there was a connection between DEI and the availability of grants. And again, Massachusetts is unable to make up this difference if these grants were lost. So I wanted to talk about, and along with my colleagues here tonight, as Laurie has mentioned, how DEI is embedded in the delivery of the programs and structure and curriculum and the relationships that the school head systems, the teachers and staff have with each of the students that we serve. So let me, let me ask those in the audience here in the building, those who may be watching from home, those who may see this video at a later date. But as we go through this, try to think about the impact on your child. You know, if you hear categories of children brought up through this discussion, and as we go through these grants, think about it, if we're losing these grants and the impact that it would have on, on your individual child, or that of your neighbor's child, or of your siblings', children', and nieces', and nephews', et cetera. Because I think this is, this, you know, this brings it home to everybody who's a part of the Falmouth School System. So let's just talk about the student population. And you've seen this slide before, it's been part of our budget discussion. So for multi-language learners, we have about seven point eight percent of the student body makeup. And let me add, let me just clarify something. You're going to see a number of different populations. There is crossover between these populations, so it's not exactly cumulative. But I just keep that in mind as we go through. So seven point eight percent today of multi-language learners, that's up from four point four percent in fiscal year twenty. So what are the grants that, that cover the, the multi-language learners? So in Title III grant, we received thirty one thousand dollars from Title III, which is from multi-language learners. And we, in the school system, budgeted another nine hundred ninety nine thousand five hundred and twenty five thousand. So that, our total amount of spend is million thirty, all right? So the grants themselves make up about three percent of that total expenditure on multilingual learners.
And the funding that we use from that, that grant funds our summer language academy. So it's a two-week program for students who are multilingual learners of English every August before they return to school. That funding also supports teacher professional development through our Sheltered English Instruction Professional Learning Community, which is required, that professional learnings required for the renewal of their professional licenses. And it also supports some of our family outreach programming that we offer, including the family reading series that we do about every six weeks throughout the school year, where we have a combination of reading with families and then providing them books that they can take home to continue reading with their children.
All right, so that's the multilingual population. Now, the second population we want to discuss is the special needs population. Again, a growing number within the school system, up from eighteen percent to twenty four percent. And in terms of the budget, the, the, the grants that are associated with special needs, particularly the IDEA grant, the first one, the largest one, is nine hundred eighty two thousand. And the one for pre-kindergarten is around thirty two thousand one hundred eighty four. The large two forty grant is used to fund and offset the outer district tuition expense. It's a large component. Our outer district expense for this year is roughly running around three point five million. So this is a significant sized grant.
Right, so the, that two forty grant, and I think just trying to think about that with IDA, we're thinking about educating students in the least restrictive environment and providing students the opportunity to be educated with their typical peers. And so in order to do that, the grant does help support, as, as Paul said, out of district support if students are not able to stay within the district. But we do use the grant within the district to support services that students would need, contracted services. So for example, if we have students who have visual impairment, we have a teacher from outside of the district to come in and consult with us, or teacher of the deaf to come in and consult with us. We have professional development, supplies, materials, staffing. I think from a material standpoint, we think about augmentative communication devices that students might need, or assistive technology, different types of furniture, or other, other pieces of equipment can also be, you, we can also use the grant money for those services. And then the two sixty two is the early childhood grant, and that is focused on our preschool students. And again, applying for, using staffing, professional development, supplies and materials are the focus there as well.
And one number, just to point out, our total spend on special education, again, and that's in that yellow column that you see on the board, but it's eighteen million one sixty five. So then, again, thinking about another group of students, so the economically disadvantaged students, that population has grown from twenty nine point five percent to forty one point two percent in twenty five. And the grant that is associated with serving those students, primarily for this district, it's in reading coaching. And the Title I grant that you see, it's sort of the purple column there, four hundred and fifty eight thousand five hundred eighty two. Our, what we spend in the budget of the school is nine hundred thirty six thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars. The total amount is a million three and change. So the Title I grant represents about thirty three percent that's spent on reading coaches.
In, in this regard, at that higher percentage, it's important to note that the funding is used for salary, largely for reading specialists reading instruction. And historically, Falmouth has had three Title I schools. In the past two years, we've added two additional schools, so we have five schools receiving Title I support. And all of them are school-wide programs. So there's two types of programs, targeted assistance or school-wide, school-wide has a higher number of eligible students. And through DESI, the Department of Education in Massachusetts, through their most recent census data collection, it's forecasted that we'll see an increase in that population of students who are economically disadvantaged and likelihood of increasing the needs within that student population.
So these suggest three of the group. So as I mentioned, multi-language learners, seven point eight percent. Students with disability, twenty four percent, economically disadvantaged, that's forty one point two percent. Again, not all of that is cumulative. There are some students that may fall into two different or three different categories. But nonetheless, you're talking about a very large percentage of the body of students here at the Falmouth School System. But that's not the only population that we, we focus in on. And we, in, in keeping in mind every student every day. And so we provide things such as vocational training. So if you look at the green column here, you'll see that we received the Perkins Grant for twenty four thousand five eighty two, that helps with vocational training. We spend on the budget is six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars on top of that. Our total spend is around seven hundred thousand. That is to give students the chance to do career directly from high school or to take classes that helps them advance to another degree post-high school, such as nursing and so on. So that's another population that is impacted by these federal grants. And we just want to, you know, again, make everybody aware so that they can see their child within this entire population. At that point, I'd like to just turn over to Henry.
So in, in my section, I'm not going to bring up anything new. It's going to be really a review of what you already know. And I just want to reiterate some stuff because DEI has been taken a hit, and it's, it's them versus us. And it should be we. It shouldn't be those kids. It should be our kids. And so I want to make sure that we have that idea of it. So in Falmouth, equity is ensuring every student every day receives support, resources, and opportunity for them to thrive. I love that, that we're a system of support, we're a school of support, which may needs, which definitely needs funds. But we are a school that requires kids' support. It's not, it's unlike what people like to say, it's equality, which assumes every kid gets the same, gets the same approach as works. You know, like, we have the same way of teaching, the same way, and supposedly everyone's going to thrive that way. We recognize the full potential. We need to know, we see our kids. And so we're, our goal is to remove any kind of barriers that's going to keep them from excellence. We want to create an exclusive, inclusive environment where all students succeed. And so the group that I'm looking at is one we forget, is our high achieving kids. And so equity often associates with those who are underserved, but just as critical as those are advanced and high achieving learners. Who are those learners? Who are those kids? They are a diverse face. They're, they're all these different faces in Falmouth community. They're all kids. And so I want to make sure that we understand all these kids can succeed. and they have different backgrounds, different experiences, and they deserve, they deserve access to rigorous, enriching, challenging challenges. And so I just got a couple of things, and they're like, we know this, we heard this, but it's equity. So expanding rigorous coursework, that's equity. Making sure that our kids, all our kids, have access to those coursework. Just making sure that happens, that's equity. Differentiating instruction, we've heard this all so many years. It's making sure we provide tailored lessons to challenge our kids, our highest-achieving kids. Flexible grouping, getting a group work, that's in classes. What is that doing? We're making sure kids are are in classes, and they might go into a specific group where they're challenged, appropriate pacing. That's equity. Mentorship, we have this every year, having experts from the field coming in saying, hey, listen to what I'm doing, and promoting, and showing those excellence, that's equity. Project-based independent learning, having kids self-directed research and saying, this is what I'm, specialized learning, that's equity. It's seeing those kids individually. Data-driven, you know, decision-making. We're looking kids by the data, and sometimes we want to remove bias, but we can see this kid can do it. This child can do it. Let's make sure he goes into the right classes. So all these things are really looking at our kids and making sure we see you, you're different, and want to give you the right support that you need. And that's what equity, and I and I feel that all our kids need it. I'm a I'm a father of two kids. I have a daughter, love my daughter, my son, absolute love. They're completely different. If you gave the same one, my son would not do well. My daughter, you give her something, and she just destroys it. My son needed more direction. Is that, does that mean, does that mean that I'm going to give the same thing? No, we have kids, these are our kids, and we want to make sure we give them support, and different kids need different supports to thrive. Some examples, I'm going to give you some, and I'm going to turn it over to my fierce partner in the high school. But some examples I see, and I'm sorry, I'm a social teacher, but Dr. Teller is saying, why is this all math and science? But I just went there. But a lot of stuff is there. Like, I love, I went to Lawrence, Lawrence Science Fair, and it was during the school day. Why did they make a change to put it during the school day? Well, before, it was in weekends, it was transportation situation, all these things. No, let's make sure, we make sure that all our kids can show advancement, they can choose to do that, that's equity. The enriched, the, we have so many partnerships over in Woods Hole. Historically, those who were, got engaged with those students were family members, they were workers. But now, we've got, we've got field trips from every grade that's going down there, and we are showing them world-class institution, that's equity. Personalized math pathways, we just introduced a new K to eight eye-ready math program. You know what that does? That personalized instruction. The kid needs to go further and higher, it will determine that, it will see it and give them challenging materials, advancing. Equity. Dual enrollment opportunities, I hope I'm not stealing somebody's thunder. Dual enrollment opportunities. Our kids have access to Bridgewater State University, Mass Maritime, psyched about that, Four Seas. That's equity. If they want to do something, I want to get some college level, I want that, that's equity. We're not treating the kids the same, we're not. We just doing about the robotics here, love that we have no robotics here. We have these enriching programs. I sat into Moll UN, listing these high-engaging students, I go, oh, I got to get in there. It kept me all my stuff, said not to get involved, but those kids, that we want to engage those discussions, that is equity. And so I think we need to really communicate to the community what is DEI. It's not this, you know, it's not just this, the race-based kind of mentality. It is recognizing our students. I was talking to Carmella Maliski, who basically said, DEI is not about supporting those kids. You know, it's not about, it is supporting our kids. If we can start looking at kids as our kids, that is fantastic. Every kid deserve the highest level of the potential, it means expanding access, expanding excellence, I really. You're you're not the privileged few, but you are expanding excellence to all our kids due to thrive. And so therefore, I want to make sure, if you have, I love what you were saying, Paul, before, you have your kids. Do you have kids that are, have failures to achieve? That's equity. You have kids that are failure to be challenged, equity needs to be involved. You have kids that are failure to engage and sell, that's equity. We've got to get supports to help those kids in there, where we are making a school of support. I love that aspect, support for our kids, make sure that's in there. It's not race-based initiative. Well, race is an important aspect for underserved kids. So I'm not going to, not say it's not that, but it's more, it is a lens which we see all our kids. We see all our kids as individual and a right to thrive. So this is who we are. I didn't say anything, this is who we are, this is what we do, and this is what is staying the course. And so now, I got to get back to you, now I want to turn over to, I'm so glad he came after me because he's so, he's so dynamic, so the most dynamic Dr. Harris, take over.
So I think it's really important that first you you hear that shortly after some of the announcements at national level in January, had several teachers come to me and say, for the first time in their career, they were afraid. Afraid that maybe what they taught caught could cost the district money, afraid that that they had to think differently. And as we processed and looked at what is on the website, right? Excellence, every student every day, what was read as the vision, and that tonight settled a little bit, but still some pause. And I want to know how, I know I speak for them when I say how grateful for they are for this meeting tonight. And what it says here, their superintendent and their school committee verbally saying, this is what we believe and who we are, and we are doing the right work, and we are with them. So we are really grateful, and we're really grateful to have a leader that speaks so passionately about it and is unabashedly courageous and saying, yeah, this is what it's about. So I'm lucky, and I know our teachers feel fortunate that we teach here, in this town, and in this state. So if you don't hear anything else tonight, please know that. At Falmouth High School, we we've worked for a few years now, trying to live out one particular quote by the president of the Teacher Association in Pennsylvania back in two thousand, early two thousand, Adam Hermansky, who said, excellence without equity is not excellence, it is privilege. And equity without excellence is not equity, it is tokenism. They are interdependent. You cannot seek one without the other, you're constantly in seeking both. And at Falmouth High School, we do our very best every day to try and do three particular things and look for three particular things. Where and how might belonging be eroded in our school? And if and when it is, how do we address that and work to make it better? How are we working every day to be a beacon of excellence in education outcomes for students? And how do we work every day to assure that those outcomes for students are not predictable by things kids cannot control? Students' income should not predict whether they're in a classroom. Student, when they have a disability or not, should not predict whether they're in a class or not. That's what we try to live out in our work, that's why the work is so good. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples of how we've tried to do this. The the most live one, and I'm so proud of our department head, our department leaders and our teachers, because it's their work. So in spring of twenty twenty-three, so teachers came to the department heads, and then they came to me, particularly in English and in social studies, for some time, we had worked to create more access for honors by not having a separate honors class in ninth and tenth grade, particularly in social studies. Did that in ninth grade in English and a couple other areas. And that work, after doing it for some time, the teachers came to department heads, and they said, look, and one particular particular was very dynamic, in saying, I feel like this mode makes me not as good as either one. If I can have an honors section, I can be better at really moving them to excellence and set that bar really high. And if I, and I also, with the other students, is going to be better at meeting where they are. So we know that every solution creates a new set of problems. And the reason we had moved to a more blended area is that when you set separate classes, it can tend to have them become separate and be predictable by things kids cannot control, that the student, that there's a lot of students with disabilities that land in honors classes. There's a lower number of students who who are low socioeconomic that land in honors classes. So our team set about to say, they agree that that's a problem we need to work on. So they attacked it by saying, we're going to add honors sections because we do need to have a sense of excellence, because we've heard from parents, we've heard from students as well. We feel like the bar isn't as high as it could be. They set set at that. But level two was to say, as we set that, how do we then say, what does equity look like down the road? And began to look at, well, what if you add a team-taught class into honors sections to create more access for students with disabilities to begin, not to lower the bar, but to increase the opportunity? And over the last two years, we've increased our honors enrollment. I think one of the things I was very proud of this fall was some students returned to us from some private schools. They came and they've been in our classes for a month, and they said to their counselors, your honors classes are a lot harder here, we have to work harder than we did in our other schools, because you guys expect more. That's what we wanted. And we have seen an increase in the number of students who are traditionally underrepresented in our honors classes and our AP classes. And we'll continue that work to look at the ways we reach both of those goals. The second piece is this concept of what we teach and Hillary talked about, and the idea that coming from the outside and seeing the curriculum, the foundational curriculum built in the core that's been so successful for so many years is so strong here. And, but we also teach a larger history. We also have teachers who take time to make sure that their instruction and the way they teach is culturally relevant to the students who are in front of them. One of the best examples I can give is that if if you're in US one history, you will get one of the richest learnings about Andrew Jackson anywhere in the world. It's taught, and it's taught with a sense of understanding, and it's also reinforced with what some of the implications of that time was. But you also, if you're in eighth grade in this district, are going to get an opportunity to understand the ramifications and implications of the Holocaust and other issues related to social justice that you will get anywhere, because they deserve to have all of that, not just part of it. And the last one that I think is so important is sometimes the diversity and the opportunity is the excellence. Our highest-attended basketball game of the year is Unified Basketball. And there's a tendency sometimes from the outside to look at that and say, oh, isn't that nice? And to see it's charity, it is not charity, it is opportunity. You think our basketball players who just played and nearly beat the number-one seed, who had also been partners, weren't inspired by Brandon, they're excited to play every day? And to see what that's like? The kids who are athletes in Unified, they provide an excellence and opportunity for the other kids. Yeah, they benefit. But our students who are more typically developed benefit even more because of how they see them and how they see the world. And sometimes we forget that diversity of experience going to school with, where forty-two percent of the population is low socio-economic, and yet you still go to AP trips in New York City, and they all get to go. Being a part of school where there's multiple multilingual students who have a chance to take the stamp test, as if it's only a benefit for the students who are diverse, no, is it a benefit for those who 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 may be more typical? That is the power. And the last piece is this story. Last Thursday, my admin team leaves every day until one thirty-two, and they're knocking on the door. Stephanie Ferranti, who's one of our teachers who supports students who are multilingual, was very excited to bring a student, because it was that student's two-year anniversary of arriving to public schools in the United States. He was a Level One English learner, which means he spoke, he did not, basically did not speak English. It was his two-year anniversary, and he was there to tell us he is a member of the National Honors Society, and has just received his fifth scholarship from where he's going to school. That is what excellence and equity looks like.
Fired up. Can we send these two to Washington? Oh, my Lord, really?
And by the way, that robotics team, this weekend, was their first competition, so they were a rookie team. They were the highest finishing rookie team by a long margin. They're going next weekend, because they got twenty-eight ranked points, I just ordered this week, but I'm going to have to. But they had twenty-eight ranked points on Sunday, and this weekend, if they get twenty-eight to thirty ranked points, they will qualify for the state. The work of Carmella and Andrew Cousins and the support of those parents, four years ago, they they they, they didn't have a lot.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for listening to us. It was important for our team to to share with you, so we appreciate your patience.
But I think it's not patience, I think it's important for all of us to be participating. And we all have heard all of this, and to be able to articulate where we are and where we're going to continue to go is so important. Mark?
You know, I want to say one other thing, because Katrina and I are at, do meet with the students from the high school. Not only did they tell us, I mean, they should really advertise Falmouth Public Schools. Not only did they tell us that you, never mind how wonderful you are and how wonderful the teachers are, we asked about different teachers, and some would say, oh, this is, this is the one who really helped me, and everyone else would go, oh, yeah. And so they'll say, but this is the one who helped me, and oh, yeah. But they also said that they are challenged to move forward, but they also are told to take care of themselves. And you balance those two things, and I think that's so important. You know, it's not just moving them forward and, you know, putting them into stress, but also helping to recognize that they can take care of themselves, but they can also be challenged. So we want to thank you for that.
Do you have something?
Yeah. I was wondering, when you made the presentation to town meeting and the budget information, not that we have the opportunity to really stress some of these charts in regards to our percentages of multilingual, etcetera, students with disabilities, but if we had a passout brochure, it will at least get the town meeting members to start to think in these terms in regards, what are the requirements for students, if things change where we have financial difficulty?
Thank you. And I I couldn't agree more, and I would also add, you know, some of the highlights of this discussion about what what equity actually looks like in the district. Because I think people don't understand, you know, there's this concept, this abstract concept of what DEI is. And that's not what it is, that's not what we're doing. So I would, I would add that to that handout, too.
I just wanted to thank everybody for launching such a passionate and robust defense and explanation of diversity, equity, inclusion, excellence. The silence has been a little deafening, and it's really a relief, and I'm just very grateful that you all were here to make such a passionate explanation and defense.
I don't want to put it down wrong, this. Completely, you know, reiterate Katrina's sentiment, thank you very much. I'm just curious, has there been talks of contingency plans for if, when funding gets cut? In terms of how we're going to, I mean, it sounds like it is embedded in our system, so it's not like you've cut a program here or there, it's it's a part of who we are. And I'm just curious if we've had discussions in terms of how are we going to cope with with this, if and when it comes down to kind of the lines?
So I assume you're speaking about the the funding side.
Yes, yes, sorry, about the federal.
Yeah, that's right, right, the funding side of it. So we certainly paused on a nice job over the several meetings, speaking about what the gap would be. We have also spoken to the finance committee and and the town council. So I feel like that we are in line, everyone has asked us, and I'm assuming that by Susan's comments, you would all be, also, the committee would support that we do talk to town meeting members. And it's not that we would be asking for increased funding in April, because we we don't know, right? But at some point, that could be the case. And I think to the point, if we can share what it is, what the funding is for, and what we do in Falmouth Public Schools for every student, I I feel confident that that we would have the support.
Yeah, so just to kind of piggyback to that, Dr. Jordan, so Sonia, am I correct in in thinking that Title I Services, the meeting coaches, because it's a school-wide program, they provide science of reading and phonics instruction to all students and not just to high 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 risks or students who are not not where their grade level. And so that means, in my mind, that everyone's child at the elementary level is benefiting from Title I Services because they are getting that that phonics and science of reading instruction.
So the the science of reading will cross our entire LMC curriculum, right? We're picking our new curriculum in the next couple of weeks. Our phonics instruction occurs in every classroom K one, two, three, by the classroom teacher. The reading specialist is available to consult. The reading specialist provides specialized instruction to groups of students. All students in the school are eligible and it it sort of cycles through over a period of weeks and then they support the progress monitoring, but they work in collaboration or partnership with the classroom teacher. So they don't necessarily provide direct instruction to every student all at one time, but all students are eligible, depending on their level of need, to be seen by or supported by the reading specialist.
But the reading specialist is also coaching the classroom teacher. So in in effect, all students are benefiting from the Title I program.
They should.
And and my feeling is that I'm concerned, I'm a multilingual educator myself, so that that is particularly bothersome, but for Title I, that is going to be really devastating to all students. So even if people feel like, oh, my child is not multilingual, that special ed, that's for special education, they they will be impacted.
Yes.
Can I add a little bit more to to that? Because I think that's that's a good point, but also back to Crystal's point. You know, we've looked at where the areas are that we could, you know, the exercise of, well, if we lost one point six million, like where where could we take, right? And you, you know, certainly no other districts, not because of this, but just because they can't support the budget, everything's more expensive. And and often the first things that that are cut are your arts programs, your music programs, theater programs, often are the first ones. And that is not what who Falmouth Public Schools is, right? That would be the last thing that we want to to cut because, you know, I mean, we live in a community that values the arts. So, you know, when you start going through, like, okay, so that is not what we would want to do, right? We're not going to take a chunk of program. We have always, students play sports for free, right? Is so would we start charging? Do we start charging for buses? You know, do we charge for activities? None of none of those would get us anywhere close to, right? It would, you know, it it wouldn't help in in our deficit of one point six million. So and again, we've done that for a long time. It's been something we offer and to me, it comes back to equity, right? Because when, you know, when you don't charge for athletics, when you don't charge for activities, that means all students participate. And so that would go against, you know, by starting those things, that's that that would go against. I know there's even more things that we have talked about over the years of wanting to offer for families that we have inched our way into to try to be able to to help support like AP courses. You know, so we offer support. We can't yet fund the whole thing, but we do offer family support, you know, in those areas. So there isn't anything that we could do that wouldn't drastically change who Falmouth Public Schools is and what we offer our students. So when you think of our budget at eighty-four, eighty-five percent of our budget is staffing, the only place that we would be able to make up that difference would be through our staffing. And what does that mean? That means higher class sizes. Another thing that Falmouth has always valued and that we continue to support is keeping low class sizes. So we're in a situation where, you know, one, we hope it never comes to, you know, having to to really ask or have requests for the the funding difference. But I think that when people understand how things would change for our school system, what we offer here, I'm I'm hoping for that understanding, but I just wanted to let, yeah, I guess what I wanted to just expand to show, like, we have gone through those exercises and there's 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 nothing that we could cut that wouldn't kind of devastate how we operate. I don't know if that's more helpful or.
No, I think it's important to acknowledge that you have done that exercise.
Dr. Harris, leave. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask him, he says some teachers came. You know, students know what's going on too and you wonder what, how they're feeling in schools, you know, these days. I just, does anybody have any words on that?
Whether this is impacting, whether they were.
Yeah, you know, I mean, in the high school, because I'm sure they're more aware than first and second graders of world things. I just wondered if any students had come, like he said, teachers had come to him, but.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah, yes.
Can I piggyback on your question? Thank you, Terry.
No.
Too late, we've already given you approval. To Terry's point, is there any way that you all can reach out? You know, to to certain populations and see if they need to have, you know, discussions or whatever you all want to do.
Sure.
Maybe just something that, that's a good question, you know, the the high school kids know what's happening.
Yeah.
I would think probably all kids.
All kids do, but I mean, high school kids, I think are
Oh, I don't.
more aware of the political things, you know.
We can get to that. Interesting politics side. Get you that, right?
Get you that.
So did you have something?
I just, I just wanted to follow up on what Dr. Dora said in regards to the support of the community in Falmouth. And school committees of the past, a long time ago, made a commitment in regards to we were not going to charge for those extracurricular activities, that fusing, et cetera. And that's what's made Falmouth different, because surrounding communities around us do charge. And it comes down to even extended family in the past in a surrounding town. I have personal knowledge in regards to where families had to make a decision as to what child could participate in a sport out of their children, because they only could afford to pay for one of them. No family should have to make the decision.
Yeah, there's so much background. Can I touch doors?
Kelly, can I just add one thing? If one would do a worksheet or something to town meeting, maybe we could leave with DEI supports our kids. Because I really appreciated Henry's comment on that. And I think that it's really important to leave with it supports our kids, not some kids or those kids or. That's.
Yeah.
Can I piggyback on Melissa in terms of?
She might not like you.
In terms of Paul was saying, in terms of the grants and what specific programs or initiatives in the schools that that would affect? I feel like just to see that, where specifically we would suffer to, I think that would kind of be.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna continue with grants and special education funding, so I'm gonna turn it back to Paul.
Okay, so this chart, the first slide is what our current expenditure is. Let me just give you a little history. We started this year with out-of-district tuition forecasted to be around two point eight million. And then it was a jump because of student needs, a variety of different instances sort of late in the fall. And that need jumped from three point four million, two point eight million to the three point four million you see in the first column on that chart. So I I'm just gonna go over what we've explained in the past. So if you look at, how do we fund this three point four million? So the net circuit breaker amount available is five twenty-five. We've talked about the two forty grant, the IDEA grant, is eight hundred and fifty thousand available to fund this grant, to fund out-of-district. Out-of-district, our online budget is a million two seventy-five. We have six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in stabilization funds. We drew down last year that we can apply to this year's out-of-district expense. And let us, let me say, thank God we drew these funds down last year because we could, we'd be in a very different scenario if we if we didn't. We're also asking the town for an additional draw in April of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. When you take this amount and sum, we'll have ninety thousand, seven thousand surplus that will carry into the fiscal year twenty-six. Now, the budget for the projection for cost for next year is gonna be roughly around the same, three point four eighty-eight. And if you can see through that column, next year, we will be short another two hundred and fifty-eight thousand on our funding. And that's with increasing our out-of-district tuition line from a million two seventy-five to a million three seventy-five. Our plan, by the way, for the budget for twenty-six going into twenty-seven is to significantly increase this number. But what's here, I want to talk about one of the mechanisms that happens within the circuit breaker, the state aid formula. So if your out-of-district tuitions rise by more than twenty-five percent, there's a feature where the set, you know, as, you know, we've said this often, out-of-district reimbursements for tuition by the state are paid in a one-year time lapse, right? So if our tuitions go up this year, the circuit breaker amount doesn't go up until next year. However, there is a threshold, if you exceed more than twenty-five percent increase, then they do give you some relief into this year. Essentially, they take from the amount that's gonna be paid next year and accelerate it into it, recognizing how much of a strain this is in any given district. So in that, in this chart, it's just explained, so if that were to happen, and we won't know until May, what the result of that circuit breaker application is. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue to come to the town in April because we can't, you know, guarantee anything until May from the state. But essentially, if you look at the circuit breaker column here, you know, for fiscal year twenty-five, this number, if we get that accelerated relief, would increase to a million one oh six. But likewise, the number for fiscal year twenty-six would go down by the amount of the accelerated relief. All right, so essentially, it gives the cash more quickly, but the but next year would still be short the same. Now, again, if you look at the need in this chart, even with the accelerated relief for fiscal year twenty-six, we're offering, we would need two hundred and fifty-eight thousand in additional funding. And if I go back to the original side, it's the same amount. We're just taking money from the circuit breaker reimbursement in twenty-six and accelerating this into twenty-five. All right?
Yes, thank you. I didn't realize that.
But this is if we.
So we still plan to apply for the drawdown in April at the town meeting. And we will go to town meeting in November and ask for additional million dollars in replenishment.
Thank you.
All right. I'd also like to, lastly, like to talk about the fiscal year twenty-four CPPI grant. We've heard a lot about this. This has been a number of concerns that have been raised about this grant. So I wanted to give the school committee, the general audience, a rundown on how this grant was applied for. And if I can, let me just give a high-level overview. So the early childhood, early educational and care, the EEC, provides grants to communities. So they can, a public school district such as ours can link together with partnerships and early education care providers and create preschool mechanisms for three and four years. So it's a way of joining a public effort along with a private effort funded through the EEC. And again, to offer more preschool opportunities for three and four years, so, right? So one of the theories is that if it's, you know, the public school has additional resources beyond teachers and classroom HTA's and so on, it's that they also have, you know, OTPT or they have other services that commend and work within those classrooms. And a private care provider doesn't have access to those specialties. So we can share those resources through these grant mechanisms. So it's an important function going down the road if we were to receive this funding. So the EEC grants take place over three stages. There's an early-stage grant funding mechanism. And that early stage is to do a needs assessment, to do a strategic plan, and then to do a a grant report at the end of that grant period. So that's the first application. The second application is for CPPI implementation, which in layman's terms is essentially building up the framework of the people and the staff and the supplies to get all three parties ready to then move on to the implementation stage, which is the actual offering of the classrooms and to the three and four years. So simple, you know, simple words, divide this application, stage one, stage two, and stage three, all right? In Falmouth's history, we applied for stage one back in fiscal year twenty-two, helping for thirty-two thousand dollars. And the needs assessment was completed, grant report was completed in the strategic plan. Normally, you would then move to the next year, the next fiscal year, just in that case fiscal year twenty-three, and apply for the next stage of the grant. But because one of the partners that we were working with back in twenty-two had staffing issues, they lost a couple of staff members, it wasn't ready to go. So that there was a one-year referral of the application for the stage two, the planning and implementation grant until fiscal year twenty-three, all right? So so what what goes into this application process, right? First of all, there's work with two community-based organizations. One is YMCA Head Start Program, which is located at the Falmouth Hospital, and it's been there for my my understanding, somewhere close to four years, that they've been running that out of the YMCA. The second was Friendship Gardens, which is in East Summit. The two became community-based partners for the Coalition for Children, which was running this grant, which was leading this grant by half of the Falmouth Public School System. So when the grant became available to apply for, which was in January twenty-four, there was extensive conversations between the Coalition for Children. there was extensive conversations between the Coalition for Children and the two partners I just mentioned. There were conversations on budget, on resources, on laptops, on ASQ, you know, the screening mechanism, ASQ service, attendance modules, etc. So that, that discussion took place over many weeks and for a long period of time. And come February fourteen, fifteen, at the final before sending out the formal application, Bethany Kay runs the Coalition for Children, actually sent each of the partners the, the breakdown of the budget on the final application. Right? And on February sixteen, Bethany Kay emailed the EEC with all of the required documents that was needed to affect the application for Falmouth Public Schools and our two community-based partners. So in that application was a budgetary workbook, right? Which outlined what the lead agency, in our case, Falmouth Public Schools budget was being, what each of the budgets for the two other members, YMCA and Friendship Gardens, right? It was clearly laid out. And again, those numbers were emailed to them as well on the night before. That workbook was the workbook that the EEC judged the application for the grant. All right? So they had the right workbook, they made a decision on the workbook, and they turned down the grant. So we received no funding from this, nor did our partners. There wasn't any money that was received by the district from the fiscal year twenty-four grant. Nothing. All right? So, and it, and now, fast forward, and I will say, let me add one clarification. In the course of the grant, the fiscal year, fiscal officer has to approve the application. This was February of twenty-four. The interim financial director at the Falmouth Public School was Paul Donlin. He's the only one that could approve that application. I became the Director of Finance on March first. All right? I can't approve an application until I become Director of Finance.
No, no, we're not.
We're not going to go back and forth, but I'll, I'll.
We are not going back and forth. If you cannot yield to the chair, then you need to leave.
Yes.
Any, grants that were applied for, excuse me, grants that were applied for after my appointment in March first, grants that were applied for were signed off by me. All right? So there's no question, anything came after March first was, had my name, right? So that clears up one component. Another misunderstanding is the business relationship that was required on, at the time that the application was submitted. In the application, and if you look in the handout that I sent to you, and if you turn to page eight, then the memorandum of understandings that we were to have with these two providers did not need to be signed until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So two months after an application, and only if the district received the grant funding under that application. So there was.
I'm sorry, we are not going to be repeatedly interrupted. If you cannot yield to the chair, then you need to leave. That is Massachusetts general law.
Is it, is it against the law to look at a meeting and tell lies? So I have all the.
If you cannot follow Massachusetts general law and stop interrupting the proceedings, then you can be removed.
All right, as you, as you can clearly read in the application, what is here is a, is a standard application that is going with, that was given out to anybody who wanted to apply. So this is, in essence, the instructions for this application. And it says applicant, applicants will be required to partner with at least two community-based organizations. It's, and it goes down, under memorandums of understanding, it says applicants will be required to draft and implement MOUs with the identified CPO partners by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So there was no need to have a memo, memo, MOU at the date of the application. The other, so clearly, communication has taken place with the partners. That's not true. There is multiple emails and communication with these partners, detailed information, some of which is proprietary, by the way, and can't be passed along because it's their business model. Right? So that's, I would, you know, want to make that clear. So that these partners were spoken to throughout this part process, in some cases, for years, going back to twenty-two. And, and, and that there was no required memorandum of understanding. So the, where the confusion comes up about this grant is that the district received a records request for all of the documents related to this fiscal year twenty-four CPPI. In the course of, of fulfilling that request, a wrong workbook. It was an initial draft of the budget workbook that had been done at the Coalition for Children. And they, in haste, provided that workbook as the basis of fulfilling that records request. The right workbook in this, in, you can see the email in the, in the handouts that I provided, the right workbook was supplied to the EEC. The wrong workbook was supplied as a part of a records request. That's the difference. An innocent mistake, which happened the first time in, in fulfilling that records request, unfortunately, continued two more times in, in where they, the person involved was thinking they were sending the same material. We've made a change within the Falmouth School System so that none of these, none of anything involving financial matter now come through the business office. All right? So that we don't have this situation going forward. All right? So the, and the fourth, we, the district has provided the actual workbook that was sent on to the EEC as part of that application. Right? So there was no fraud or alteration of workbooks. You had an incomplete workbook that was initially supplied to a records request. You had a complete workbook that was supplied to the EEC to evaluate their claims. All right? It's a completely different story than what we've heard before. So with that.
Any questions, Paul?
Yeah, the MOU thing, so when was, the application was submitted in February?
It's February sixteen.
And then it wasn't required, the MOU, until.
Till June of thirty.
And then we were rejected before that MOU was required?
Yep, we were rejected on, I think, March thirteenth of their bond.
That's, that's pretty typical, right? Usually don't, I know, I just wanted to clarify, though, in general, grants, you, if you get awarded, then that's when things start taking place. You would do your MOUs, you would start your meetings, and so forth. Really, nothing, it's all kind of projected until you, you're awarded. And then that's when things start. I just, in, for general grants.
Follow-up question is this printout of screenshots and texts that keeps coming back up. I wanted to just ask, since we're talking about this, the assertion is that the, one of the partners didn't know that they were listed as partners, is that, what is that about?
It's a, that is, that can't be true. There are exchange of emails between both of those partners and the Coalition for Children. Extensive exchange of emails going through all the matters that I listed. And they were also notified about the final numbers on the, on the, on the application, the day before the application was submitted. So no, there was extensive emails, exchange of budgetary information, exchange of equipment information such as laptops, screening tools such as ASQ. There was multiple conversations during this time to develop that very application.
So I guess the person was just confused then, but I think, I don't remember exactly when. I remember speaking to her from Friendship Gardens, I can't remember her name, the director, Paul, in October or something like that, about, I didn't know anything about this really yet. And she was pretty clear that she didn't understand that she was listed on a grant. So I guess that was just her misunderstanding.
I, well. Katrina, I'd be shocked, we can show emails that that are detailed, that's what I previewed. All right?
Yeah.
I'd be, I'd be shocked that someone hasn't been involved in that discussion.
Here. So aside from all the misunderstandings and everything, bottom-line question, I've always wondered, never had an answer to this, why did we get rejected when we had gotten accepted two years ago? What happened? Why didn't we get to go on with it?
Well, it's a little tough for me to answer. I'm not, there, there's a grading system that the EEC uses on the application. And there were certain categories that we did well on, and there were certain categories, categories we didn't do well on. And, and, and there were other districts that performed us on our answers. So beyond that, but I, I.
Okay, so in a nutshell, we just didn't, we had tough competition.
That's true.
Okay, all right.
Well, and I think, I mean, most brands, just because you get the implementation, just because you get the planning, doesn't mean you get the implementation.
Are we applying?
Mike?
Um, through you, Kelly, I asked Paul, I, I don't know if you know this, but those survey monkeys, those went out to the different preschool providers in town? Who are the survey monkeys from?
There was, there were several surveys that were taken as part of the fiscal year twenty-two grant. There were surveys done for providers, there were surveys done of families, and there were surveys done for, you know, agencies that offer help outside of the school system. That, they may be agencies that offer housing or counseling services and so on. So there were a number of different avenues that were, people were surveyed during that time.
Okay, then the follow-up question, if I could, can we get a list of the preschool daycare providers who, not their answers, but just who submitted survey monkey, as well as the header for the survey monkey? Because I, Katrina had said there was one from Friendship Garden, I don't know if I spoke to her, but I have spoke to other preschool coordinators who had no idea any of this was going on. So I'd like just having, like, and then, as far as the community goes, with the preschool providers and all that stuff, just to see who was involved in the surveys and if they knew what the purpose of the survey was for. Because right now, I just have like the dot PDF. So I really have no idea, you know.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I asked it off-term. Are we applying, did we just apply February for this again?
The grant itself has not come out yet, is our understanding. But now, too, too much time has passed since our needs assessment, and we may need to start back at the level of the needs assessment.
Um, thank you for all the background information, Paul, I appreciate it. Uh, do you have?
Yes.
He does, he was, so he's going to talk about goal four, sorry.
The, the business office, it was time consuming. So just, he's going to talk a little bit, a little bit about goal four. And just, just to kind of reiterate, our goals, these are our district-wide goals that, you know, not only are led by our administrators, but these are, you know, staff are always involved in actually doing the implementation of the goals. We have divided the goals, the four goals up among the, the four directors slash assistant superintendent. And so that's why we have been doing, so we usually like to talk about the, the goals, and then we, you don't hear from us again until June. And we kind of give the, you know, the, the year-long report on how we did on the goals. And what we tried to change this year was to give periodic updates on how we're progressing through the goals. So I hope this has been helpful. Tonight, Paul will speak on goal four, and in a bit, Sandy will speak on goal three. And then on March twenty-fifth, fun, he will talk about goal one, and Henry will talk about goal two. So I, I hope, you know, we, we've given, you know, one update, this is the second one, then we'll probably, then at the end, in June, give another. So anyway, Paul, please, talk about goal four.
All right. Goal four was really about sustainability. And so one of the, we were, been working on a number of different areas in, in trying to increase or lessen the district footprint. One of the ways that we've done is what we've talked about before is that we've been more effectively managing how we heat up or cool down a building so that we, when, you know, you control the building within occupied time, we try to push that so that the buildings aren't heating up at a time, you know, at such an early hour that the heat's being wasted that students don't arrive two, three hours later. And that's been, that's been pretty successful, except that with the cold snap that we went to, just came through, our energy, our natural gas usage has gone, gone up. So we, we were looking for a seventy-seven thousand dollar saving for the air. But that, it's probably not going to make that, given we just had a much colder winter than we had in previous years. So that's one, on the offset to that, though, our electrical usage, likewise, we're trying to reduce that, that has come down substantially. So where we may intersect with those is that we may still yet achieve our target, but it'll be combination of both electricity and gas. Another area that we're working on is recycling with throughout all of the schools to, into making sure that we have an active program in each of the schools. And by the end of this month, within the elementary school, all elementary schools will have students involved in the recycling process. And, and, and that essentially is, is the young kids come up, go out with one of the teachers, and they empty into the recycling bin at least once a week for the elementary schools. At the, at the Morse Pond Lawrence in high school, what they do is that the janitors, custodians, rather, will go around to e- each of the rooms. If there's a recycling bin that is full, they'll empty it then, then and there. If it's not full or has one or two papers in it, it will hold off until the end of the week. And then they recycle, they have a recycling bin in each of the, if you go into the building, you'll see a recycling bin at the end of the hallways for the, you know, the handle of the volume that's, that's trying to be recycled. So, so we're, you know, making. So, uh, so we're, you know, making progress on every school, you know, having a program in place, which, I mean, by the end of the month, it'll be school-wide. Um, the, uh, the next, uh, uh, item we talked about is the, uh, the milk containers, this, you know, the big milk dispensers, uh, and, uh, we are waiting on, so the food service division through the cooperative of, of other Cape Cod schools, uh, buys through food cooperative, uh, and that, that contract is out to bid, we'll hear uh, in July or June, the results of that bid. Uh, and at that point, we can see if we can bring more of these containers into our, into the schools. Um, and, and, and reduce our, just the volume of waste that we produce in the, in the cards. So we're making progress, some things we have to wait on, some things subject to weather, weather, but, uh, overall, we're making progress.
But, you know, I think, um, just my two cents, yes, we might not meet that target that you originally set, but can you imagine how much energy we would have wasted if we were keeping the buildings that much warmer for that extra time during a cold snap? So it's not just the savings, it's also just the, the use. So, and I think you were mentioning something about the recycling teams?
Well, each of the schools, yeah, I, I'm sorry, as part of that, each of the schools have a recycling team, as I said, mentioned.
They're little brain teams.
Yeah, they're little brain teams, the kids are involved and, and helping empty the recycling bins and so on. And, uh, so it's, uh, you know, that's at the elementary schools, uh, so they're, those are actively underway.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, update on student services.
Alright, so, um, ESY, the wheels are in motion. So ESY is the extended school year for our students in special education who are at risk for substantial regression of skills over the summer. And, um, I feel like each time I give a little update, I need to explain a little about some of the special education services, cause I think sometimes, you know, people throw around words like summer school or ESY and there might be questions. So just to explain that students would qualify for these services, not all students who have special education needs go to the extended school year, but students who are at risk for substantial regression of skills over the summer would qualify. So this year, our program will run from July seventh to August fourteenth, then we've hired our coordinator for the summer, which is uh, a success, and we've also started hiring our teachers for the summer school program. And then new this year, we're waiting for a final word from Desi, but we're going to be able to offer a lunch at the ESY program. So that's, that'll be great. Then I also wanted to just offer an highlight for our professional development. Last week, our school adjustment counselors and school psychs had the opportunity to attend a virtual PD from McLean Hospital. So, uh, the topic was supporting students with anxiety, including panic and OCD. Um, I did check in with, um, people from both, uh, school adjustment counselors and the school psychologists, and they said the presentation was excellent. They really, um, appreciated the opportunity to have that presentation. And we do utilize our McLean consultation services throughout the school year. So on a rotational basis, the schools have the opportunity to present with a, uh, counselor from the, from McLean, present a situation that's going on at the school, and so that might, might be invited, the classroom teacher, the school adjustment council, anyone who's involved and coming up with a support plan, um, based on their experience, they can offer some ideas and suggestions. So we continue to take advantage of those opportunities and then also have the, um, professional development throughout the year. Um, and then we have, uh, just a reminder, Fresh Market is on Thursday. And actually this month, Falmouth Human Services asked if they could have a table and be on-site for Thursday as well to hand out information. So they'll be there too. And then for the communication goal, so we've been using the QR codes this year to gain more information and feedback when families are attending school events. There, the participation has varied. We've had as low as two and as high as forty-four responses at some events, but the principals are rethinking their plans to incorporate the QR codes and perhaps the opportunity to just fill it out during the event might not be best. They're thinking more of maybe adding it to a flyer or something, and then families could use it when they, when they leave. So, um, we did actually have QR codes available too, and we just had the, the survey, um, read to us last week. So it's the information that they have been able to access that way has been useful in planning for future events. And then for communication, we're also looking at Power School and ensuring accurate and current information. So this is an ongoing effort. Um, we have our electronic back-to-school forms that the students all need to fill out, uh, or the families need to fill out in the, um, fall, and that really just takes a lot of, um, time and effort for our administrative staff to follow up with families and support them in filling out the, that paperwork. So a lot of the schools have, um, offered direct support to families. We have the Chromebook set up in the office. Families come in, maybe to dismiss a student, might be a quick opportunity to help them, you know, make sure that all that information is up to date. It's important, obviously, for, um, when there's times that we do send out phone calls or emails. So each of the schools um, we're able to export a file after the connected calls go out and determine how, what the accuracy is for the number of phone call, uh, phone numbers or, um, emails. So just some general statistics for the contacts for phones, we have three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four. And there are, were about ninety-nine of the numbers were either listed as the phone was deactivated or undeliverable. So now we'll take that information, go back to the schools and say, okay, these are, these are the areas where we need to focus. And then emails, we have, um, actually a higher accuracy with the emails. So the contacts, the three thousand five hundred and two and forty-eight were listed as invalid addresses or an email error, which could be either or. And then we actually do have a, a few families, um, who do not have any contact information in Power School, um, that's ten families. So um, we're gonna continue to work and see if we can get that very important information into Power School. And then just sort of in general, the schools continue to work to find out with families, what is the best way to communicate? Is it a phone call, text message, uh, or emails using social media? The principals have worked hard at promoting, um, and using hyperlinks to people's names and emails and things so that people can quickly send an email if they have questions or concerns. Um, and obviously there's a, a promotion of, um, trying to just work hard to improve that communication. So if you reach out to a family and maybe it was via email and you're not hearing back, then check in and, and make a phone call. So it's a, a work, always a work in progress, but it's very important for us to, to have all the, um, contact information, especially in case of an emergency.
Thank you.
Questions?
A question, uh, the ten families that don't have the Power School, is that by choice or is that an inequity in some sort?
Um, I think it might be a combination of both, and I don't actually know, cause I don't know, you know, we're gonna be following up tomorrow. I would just gain, I just pulled that information before tonight, so.
Okay. I just would hope that, um, it just seems late in the year to, for families not to be connected. And if that's their choice, that's one thing, but if it's, um, inequity, I feel like that's kind of a.
There are some preschool, um, names there, so it may be families that have just, um, their students, right, like they have recently enrolled because it is the rolling admission, um, but that doesn't account for all of them.
Okay, thanks.
I have two questions and a points. This QR thing you do, what's that, like the science fair and such? Explain this to me for a moment.
The QR code.
Yeah, I love QR codes.
Okay, so that's, that's exactly what it is. So the principals, so the principals this year, in order to try to get feedback from families.
Yeah.
They thought if they could offer the QR code similar to when we had the NASDAQ report read to us, could quickly just scan it with your phone and give feedback versus sending links to fill out a survey or something else afterwards. Right, so it was like two questions and telling people, it's only gonna take one minute. You know, here are the two questions to fill out. So it's just again, another.
Yeah, when you do that, do you offer any kind of random prize? Because that will increase the number, a T-shirt?
Wow, well, I will have to.
Because anything for free, people are much more likely to go in. My second question is about the ESY lunch program.
Yes.
I had mentioned, uh, it might have been before you here, but I had mentioned that over the summer, is there a way to feed or make, make lunches available to any student who might be in need? Whether Desi comes through or not, can we still afford to buy lunch for the ESY students and any student in need for the summertime?
So I've been focused on the, the ESY, and I know I've been working with Andrea Burns.
Okay, so I wanna make sure. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
The follow-up of the two articles. So it was, I'm just wondering what kind of questions, if there's two questions, would it be specific to the event we just had?
I think. No, I think it was, it was related to the event and to just quick, quick questions of suggestions of things, plus, plus just feedback, information. Okay, next up, uh, the Cape Cod Collaborative amended agreement. Carrie, I know you're still knowledgeable, are you taking it?
I'm taking it.
Fabulous, thank you.
Okay, so, um, on February twelfth, the Board of Directors of the Collaborative unanimously, unanimously voted to, um, change the Articles of Agreement so that, um, Plymouth Public Schools can be added to the Cape Cod Collaborative. Um, if this is approved by the member districts, which is, we're a member district. So if, um, if you wanna read the entire Articles Agreement, if you're having trouble getting to sleep, it's available. I can send, um, I can send it to you. Um, I have it, a form I'll send it to you. Um, if you have any questions, you can ask me because um, Hope Hansman, who is the new director, is gonna zoom in at our next meeting and will field questions. So if you just have a handle beforehand of what you might be wanting to know, like, why would you wanna invite somebody else in? Which I hope, a couple of things I'm gonna read might help you know that. Um, I'll keep it inside, but if you wanna look at the document, um, before we vote next. This is just to learn about it. Next one will be to vote on it. So, um, two things that I pulled from the Articles of Agreement that is kind of a general thing, not everybody knows what the collaborative does. Um, so the mission of the Cape Cod Collaborative is to provide as an interdependent, and that's the operative word in my opinion, an interdependent collaboration of member school districts. A flexible, evolving range of high-quality, cost-effective programs and services. The other thing has to do with working together. Um, this agreement is based upon the premise that some programs and services for member school districts can be accomplished more economically, effectively, and efficiently through the collaborative than could be accomplished by each individual school district. So, yeah, that's the thing. Um, so, uh, Plymouth has been coming to our meetings for months, listening and doing a program here or there, and I do not know why they wanted to become, or good for them. So I'll go over it again. Um, everybody on the Board of Directors voted unanimously to change that, um, Articles Agreement. So the next step is that each member district has to, um, agree to it. And then we, we'll vote, Kelly will sign it. And then we'll send Kelly's address. Desi is funny, I'm Kelly's signature. Desi's funny. They, they want, we have to cut and paste everybody's school member district signature. Anyway, but, so, we'll get it done. So I would say, this, having all the years, uh, work with things, you can imagine, if you have a very special special needs student that you need services for, some of the out-of-district placements that we have, for example, um, are, are so, um, individual that if you have more districts, you have more ways that you can coordinate, two people can do that and save some money for both districts. They also do a lot of wonderful things you hear me talk about year and year after year is the, um, the ability to go to the Mass Maritime in the summer, our MSLP program. So, um, give opportunity for more kids to go there. Okay, anyway, any questions?
Sue, I saw your hand go.
Sure, I'll be glad to send. I was making jokes about, no, I would think you would all wanna take a gamble at it.
Yes, for sure, before we have to. Alright, great. Okay. Um, next up is a discussion on the NASDAQ report. So like I started, um, said at the start, you know, we haven't had a chance to talk about it. Um, we got the information, we had, you know, the, uh, the presentation. This is the first chance that we've had um, to, to chat about the content of the report. And, um, I also do think that, you know, so if we have questions or comments or things that we need clarified, this is our chance to talk through them. Um, but I do think we should be careful not to step into the building needs responsibilities. So not, we don't, I, I don't think we're in a place yet that we can be discussing the merits of all the solutions. That's the building needs job. And they've got a meeting scheduled. So, um, so if we can stay focused and not get, you know, down, down in the weeds for doing building needs's job. Mike, you wanna go first?
Yeah, I have a question. And, um, as far as the building needs go, for them to start at like a, a starting point, I believe that every one of the proposals from the NASDAQ discuss redistributing or set, you know, moving the children to all of the elementary schools. Said, the building, Building Needs Task Force is looking at navigate in the future. So if they're starting from that meeting in the future and they present us with, this is what we think. NASDAQ is talking about redistributing students or redistributing whatnot. So in my opinion, those two things are counterproductive. Where you can't have one group discussing navigate in the future focusing on two elementary schools where NASDAQ and all of their options talks about all of those groups. And I believe Dr. Harris said it great when he said, a student's income level should not affect their schooling. Something to that effect. But I think that we do have to, based on the NASDAQ reports, we have to give the Building Task Force a starting point from that. And I believe now is the time to delete the Navigate in the Future because it does not match up with anything in the NASDAQ. And that's my only point. Thank you.
Anyone else have any thoughts or takeaways?
I can't.
Oh, someone. Yeah, just talking about.
Um, as I had mentioned, um, previously, I would just put in a request to the Building Needs Task Force to, um, the data about pre-K and K, um, on several pages indicated that it will be level, um, if not declining. And so I would just like a clearer explanation or line to be drawn from that data point to the first three options. Which, um, recommend, uh, pre, a, a building dedicated to a pre-K facility. So I'm, I'm just, um, I would just like clarification for that, and I think the Building Needs Task Force would be able to do a deeper dive.
Um, so one of my takeaways is sort of related, tangentially related to one of your questions. And that I, I was worried that we were gonna see data that showed continual dropping, going out even to the ten years. And I know they said that their ten years aren't as, um, reliable, but I was actually relieved to see that we are gonna sort of level out again. And hopefully any shifts that we make, that would be it. Um, so I was actually not related to the pre-K and K question, but just in terms of that, the drop and then the level. Um, actually, I was comforted by that to know that we're not gonna keep dropping, 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 at least in their prediction. That was one of my key takeaways that, um, from the data. And it's not a question, it was just my thought. Carrie?
Are you taking comments?
Sure. Yeah, I just, I, I just think we should get to talking.
Okay, so some general, general. Okay, so some general, general things I noted was at the very beginning of this, um, packet that they presented, it's given, um, New England pre-K enrollment figures, um, New England states, and it said that this is their 10 year, um, I forget. Yeah, I guess it's a 10 year figure. Okay. I forgot how long it was for. The trends, okay? And they said that, um, Massachusetts is, um, pre-K enrollment is looks to decline by minus 7.2. So, um, that's a, that's a big consideration. That was from the national trends. Um, and I think if you add Falmouth aging population, you know, you, you got to make that consider. So a consideration of that was what the national trends were given to us by, um, I'm not sure where, the Department of Education, which said that. Okay, so, um, that's something to be considered before or while we consider, um, closing down four schools or not closing them down, up dumping them. So I think we should keep both those things in mind. And also we, I know we have fiscal responsibility, but I also think we should be able to consider the value of neighborhood schools as well. So those are some overlying things that I hope, we will all consider as we move forward with this question. And that was point number one. Point number two is that with all the things that Paul spent a long time, thank you very much, explaining the effects of the cuts and grants and things, all spoke to everything. I think we should just lay low for a long, at least a year before we consider doing anything because it's just such a crazy financial environment. I mean, and I saw, and one of the things you gave that, the grant that received for the current pre-K that we have is could be annulled. So what would that happen to our pre-K initiatives? Anyway, that's just my point. I think we should really wait low for a while until things calm down above.
I would really like to abbreviate this discussion in regards to, we have a task force that will be discussing all of these things. They will come back to us with recommendations and then we take it from there. I, I think we're jumping the gun.
I think we can all have individual thoughts on our own. Well, you're not allowed to have thoughts unless the task force puts a majority.
No.
I mean, I.
But we're not going to go, we're not going to get into a, a back and forth. But, you know, my original thought was that after everybody had a chance to look at the report, there might be pieces that we didn't understand or we needed clarified or followed up on, like your, to your point. So this is our chance to do that because we all know we can't do it any other way. So if we can focus on those pieces and not get into doing the building needs job, that is what we're supposed to be trying to do right now. Do you have a question about something?
Well, I don't know if you'll be able to answer them, but I have three very specific questions and a general observation. Uh, real quick.
Yeah, I mean, this is what, this is our chance to get questions.
So I didn't understand the projected student yield for all those various housing projects. Um, I could, I didn't understand why it is that the pre-K through fourth grade student yield is so much greater than the high school projected yield. And that's across the board for all of the projects. It was things like 19 to 24 students in pre-K and four, or K before, and then only three or four students in the high school. And 27 to 33 was a different set of projects.
Oh, so you're saying like, how did they come to that?
Like, all those kids go into kindergarten, they grow up, I would assume they'd still be in high school. Why is there such a smaller number by the time they get to high school?
I think it's initial.
Of the initial kids that were going. So they're saying people with teenagers may not move here as readily as people with smaller kids.
Well, just overall.
Yeah, we can definitely find out. My guess is that if I had a kid in ninth grade, I probably wouldn't uproot my family unless I had to. But you're more likely to do it with young kids. But that's what I'm totally guessing. Can we try and find out?
It just really struck me that there was such a dramatic increase of projected.
Can I just, can I also, you know, if you have a, a smaller kid, the apartments aren't three to four bedrooms. So if you have a teenage kid, you need, they need their own bedroom. If you have little kids, there's less space that you need. And I think that may be part of it too. That's how I sort of interpreted it.
The capital asset assessment that she made a point of mentioning that that was not done. I don't know what capital asset assessment is in this context, but she mentioned it and it's written in the report that they didn't do a capital asset assessment.
Paul, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have any idea what that means?
I'll have to take a look.
All right, we'll have to look at it. We'll find out.
Um, and, oh, um, there, she mentioned the new parking improvements that East Falmouth, um, no, I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but it was a minutes of questions because she had said summer 2025 that improvement was happening. And I didn't know if there was plan for tree cuttings. I remember when we talked about that back in the summer or early fall, that we were going to talk about that. And I wanted to do that before.
Yes, we're planning the phase one.
Right, exactly. So the, the phase one is the, you know, you look at the parking directly in front of the building, in front of the entrance of the building is, uh, there's space for six additional spaces if we widen that, uh, that parking of that aisle. It would, it would necessitate taking down two trees. So the engineering plans are in process. We have not cut them back since we first bought, uh, spoke with the D B W. Um, but yeah, if we, uh, you know, that's pretty much the only area unless we take out one of the playground spaces to add additional space, uh, parking spaces.
It seems like a small thing that they just cut a tree in middle of the hall and of all, every single parent that walks to go get their kids, every single person senses it's cut and is going, what happened to that tree? So, you know, I know it really is important to people. Um, and then my observation, um, is just that none of the data was surprising to me. Um, didn't feel like new information and widely collected data. Um, I found it to be well compiled and, um, good research and data to have. The outcome options felt like a waste of time for me because, um, they didn't include Morris Pond High School in the assessment. So there's no new information, ideas, or options on the table as far as I can see it. Um, so in that sense, I just reiterate that it feels like a waste of money. In that sense, it was good data, good collection, but to me, it doesn't come up with, um, really like this.
Any last questions?
Can I?
Oh, Chris, yes.
Um, yeah, I was, I was curious, you know, in, in terms of the options where they included kind of closing the Morse Pond Middle School. Was that based on, since it wasn't included in the report, was that based on kind of their own assessment? Or was that kind of because we had that as, as part of our proposals? I'm just kind of curious if that was something that they came to on their own.
So that was part of, um, the request here in this building, um, uh, needs task force that, uh, could fifth grade be included? And so if they're saying fifth grade can be included, obviously you're not going to have a school with the one grade. And knowing that it was already approved for the, uh, the renovation, I think they were making the assumption that if you can include fifth grade, then Morse Pond would go.
Yeah. Without getting, um, emotional or something about this relationship between us and the task force. I think it would be good to be working in tandem and my comments were not doing their job. It was offering things that I would like to consider. I just think that we have a very important part in the decision too. I don't think we should or could or would take everything they said as the bottom line. You know, so I, I don't quite understand why I was accused of doing their job for them when I was giving some observations that I would like to be considered.
So my, um, my take on how the process goes is that, you know, building needs is going to take this up. They're gonna probably do something similar. I'll have questions, I assume. We'll go back to the, um, to Karen, if we need clarification, they'll look at all of these options at the end. They'll look at all of the navigating the future original options and come to some recommendation that then will come to us. And we'll do the same thing. And if we don't like the option they bring us, we won't vote for it because we have to do our due diligence as well. We could be in a long cycle where we kick it back to them and say, we don't like that one, do something else. You know, the final decision rests at the school committee. And the building needs task force is a way for additional input into a recommendation, but it's not at all like we have to follow that. That, that is my take on the, the process that we've set in place. Um, that's my thought. Paul's answer.
I have, um, two things separately. One, I was a little disappointed that the, um, overall, I was fairly, uh, not disappointed with the NASDAQ report. I was disappointed in the fact that, uh, the cost of the rental units were not included because I feel like, um, as I've said before, Falmouth, the Cape is a funny area and Falmouth has its own unique personality and each village in Falmouth has their own unique personality. And that includes, uh, financials, I guess is what I want to say about. So like the cost of, uh, rental units, including what, um, people are calling affordable housing. So, um, I was a, a little disappointed that that big elephant in our town right now was not included in this because I think that that's a large piece. And I think that potentially some of this, uh, the data provided to us could be skewed by not including like no single family, I shouldn't say no, most single families cannot afford a two-bedroom to the tune of $3,500 a month plus utilities, plus a car payment, plus groceries, plus cell phone. Like I just, I feel like that was, um, in, I was disappointed about that because I don't think that that's painting the whole picture. Um, is that, and that, what was my second? Was that my first or my second?
I'm not in your brain. I'm sorry. I don't know.
To respond to that, um, I, I wanted that date as well. And, and I, and I asked, but they, that's not within their scope. They don't do that. But we're already starting. So we've got the first batch. We've got some of the answers, some have been presented at some point. We're working on the second.
That would be great.
Whatever information, but we definitely have the information.
Will it, do you think it'll be ready for building needs when they need to? They're the ones that.
Yep. Well, like I said, the first is done. The second one, the second, the first batch were already under construction. The first, the second one, I think, weren't under construction. I can't remember exactly. I don't know what I'm going to be able to get out of the next one, but we're going to get as much as we can.
Okay. And then my second thing unrelated, um, but related to the discussion was if we look at building needs task force as we would look at another uh, task force or subcommittee coming before the school committee, we've had discussions previously. So if you, let's talk about policy. Things have come to school committee and we have had a brief discussion on them. And then the school committee has said, you know what, we would love for policy to take the lead on that. And then the policy subcommittee does their job and then they bring those recommendations back to the school committee. Sometimes those recommendations are approved and sometimes those recommendations are not approved. So I feel like I'm kind of walking both lines there. I, I, I agree with, uh, Kelly and Sue that we need to let building needs task force, uh, do the job. But I also hear Terry in there because we've had discussions and then sent discussions to, um, subcommittees or task forces in the past. We could also, if you don't want to use a subcommittee, if you want to talk about the task force that we've had in the past, we could talk about the school start time task force. That was a, a year-long process and some of it, you know, we, we ultimately didn't change the times of our, uh, start times on our schools. So I feel like I'm a little bit of a peacemaker right now, trying to be a peace builder and see, um, both sides. And that's just my thought on that.
Any final thoughts? Okay. Thank you, guys. Um, next up is the, hold on, I gotta get to the official paper. Public hearing. Uh, is there a motion to open the public hearing on school choice? Thank you, Mike. Second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, we're open.
All right, just as, um, a reminder, uh, we are recommending, uh, four seats for each grade of grades one through 11.
So when I.
We're not voting.
Oh.
If the public has anything to say.
All right.
That's, I appreciate.
That will be next month.
Our next month, next meeting, sorry. The 25th of March.
Finished, did you?
Yeah, that was a, no, I just wanted to just say what the recommendation was. This was in the packet last, I presented this.
No changes, right?
No changes. I presented this information at the last meeting. I just wanted to state it in case anybody.
Same as last year as well.
Same numbers as last year, I believe the year before. Yes, like last year, it may have been six seats the year before.
It was six.
I think it was, this is the second year, four seats.
Thank you. Okay, come on up. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I can't guarantee we'll have an answer, but for sure.
Uh, so just to help my understanding, um, with school choice, do we set, does our district set the, um, amount that is reimbursed to us? So what is our actual, so what is the bottom dollar expense for the entire district last year for, for example? Like what was the, what was the?
Expense of revenue.
Expense.
The expense, so students leaving.
No, no, no. What was the expense for the entire district, the cost of operating?
The budget.
The full budget?
The full budget?
Yeah.
Full budget. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Because that's important.
I don't have.
Fifty eight million, four twenty two.
And then, well, okay, so cost of anything related to providing educational services. So when we start getting into like, uh, operations of the schools. Is that how we determine our cost per pupil? Like what goes into our determining what it actually costs to educate a student within our system? And then how does that number compare to what we are reimbursed? Or are we reimbursed differently depending on that district's sending? Like, do they have a cap on how much they can send to us? And with the financial uncertainty as we move forward and more scrutiny on our spending, um, in light of kind of everything that's going on in the world, what are we doing to ensure that we are prioritizing, we are getting as much in as we are spending on that student? Um, just to make sure that we, we are first and foremost, giving our, our Falmouth students a, a fair shake before prioritizing bringing other people in. I can totally understand if it is a source of revenue. But at the end of the day, is it a break even revenue? Are we making money on that student really when you look at the cost per pupil? So I just wanted to kind of understand what, what that looks like.
Well, the, the, the general answer is, the amount of money that's reimbursed is sort of the formula set, is set by the state. Um, I think it's $5,500 on the student. If it's a special needs student that's being uh, educated in the district, then there's certain reimbursement factors that are, go above that, uh, as well. So it's not just the $5,500. But the, the, the theory behind school choice is it allows districts to use capacity. Um, so if there is, you know, if a, a room, a, a particular classroom, um, is maybe has 14 students, then you have capacity to bring in extra students and, and help, and that helps subsidize the overall program. So we, we received about a million fifty three thousand in, in school fund. Uh, we expect the same last year. I mean, and it's a vote of confidence, uh, in the district from uh, people coming in from other districts, uh, valuing the Falmouth school system.
I moved to a format child to go to school here.
Yep.
100%.
So in, in that, in that, the, the school cho, uh, uh, choice funds, they use for a substantial payment on, on the technology side, uh, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't have the breakdown off the top of my head. Uh, but they, uh, do programming, a C I ready program, uh, we just spent a half, a half million dollars on on this past year. That was, you know, uh, was subsidized through the school choice funds. Um, a lot of the field trips, athletic trips, uh, a big part, you know, the education is the, uh, is the value of these feet, the field trips. Yeah, you know, they're all provided for, through the school choice funds. So there's a distinct value in that. And again, it's using capacity. It's not, we're not adding capacity to bring a student in. We're using capacity within the system that if that student there, that cost would be there. So it's capacity utilization, not in it's so it's, you can't compare what a cost of a student is versus, you know, overall what we're spending to what we're receiving when a school choice student.
I think I think of finance very much like in that linear way. So I was trying to understand money in, money out. Because to a few of the committee members' points and some things that you've discussed, like I remember in high school, I had to pay, well, my parents had to pay, I didn't have a job, for my bus, my brothers and I have a bus pass. They had to pay for us to participate in sports. So I realized that those are additional costs that we would also be paying for out of out of district students as well. And but we wouldn't be paying for transportation for that because we don't offer it. So does it kind of even out? So I just wanted to better understand for the money that comes in, is that comparable to the services we provide? And if not, is it something when we say that we are looking at cuts prior to looking at cutting wonderful staff that we have? Is it possible to look at, okay, with these school choice situations, what does that money look like?
So let me just answer that question as simply as I can. If we had a fifty million dollar budget, for example, last year, if we had no school choice students, we would have a fifty eight million dollar budget. With the school choice students, we have fifty eight million dollar budget plus a million dollars in school choice funds. Right? So it is using the existing capacity. So if we didn't have these students, we wouldn't be laying off anyone. All right, it's 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 that simple. In our budget coming up, we'll have sixty one million dollar budget. You know, and we'll have another million dollars in funds. If we had zero school choice students intending Falmouth, we would have a sixty one million dollar budget.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the public?
So just listening to that, it sounds like there are some perks to having these students come in, right? Because then we have extra funds and we have different things that we can utilize them and do stuff that doesn't take from our actual budget. So what are we doing with these uncertain times with the schools, like most people in kindergarten now don't even really want to come to Falmouth because they don't know what our five year projection is going to look like. Are we going to D-Day? Are we doing this? So there's a lot of uncertainty with our school system at the moment. So if we would like to have kindergarten, keep people coming in, but then also have out of district come in, what are we doing to making them feel more secure? And making them want to choose us versus other people? More of a thought and a question to you guys, like just something to think about because I do know there's a lot of talks around town that they don't want to come anymore because of navigate the future and and all that other stuff. So just putting that on for you guys to think about because it does seem like there are perks and I would love that, especially because if the budget is what the budget is, our students in Falmouth are benefiting from that with not taking away from the budget. So I don't know if you can talk on that now or.
I have a question for Paul. Paul, could you, if you know, where does Falmouth lie across the Cape on school choice as far as are we one of the lower towns that receive students coming in by school choice? Are we in the middle?
We're the highest.
We're the highest on the Cape.
Which, no, I think that's awesome. Like, and I want to keep it that way because it does sound like it's going to be something that all the kids can benefit from. And even our classroom sizes and different things that are going down. But if we're thinking about that and we want to stay on that projection, what are we doing to keep that going? And that's basically what my question is.
Thank you. Any last comments? Okay, is there a motion to close? Thank you, Mike. Second, all in favor, say aye. Any extensions? Great. Moving along. Act on the, oh yay, fun stuff. Okay. Act on the annual art gallery trip for the National Honor Society.
Can I make a suggestion? When I was at the Summer Institute last year, they said that all the budgeting could be done as one vote instead of doing. I mean, it's wonderful to hear about how great the trip is, but if we could just
It's not a budget item. We have to approve it because kids are
Put them all together instead of each one separately would take less
Because one of them is a out of district school and one is a donation and one is an item. So I hear your point, but we can't do it tonight because there are three different things. Do you want to speak to it?
So there are, the annual trip is planned for New York. Forty eight students are attending, they're raising half of their money. And the itinerary is in your packet, but generally it's the same trip. They walk across the Brooklyn Bridge. They view the galleries in the Lower East Side. And then they visit the Museum of Modern Art. Lunch, they have dinner and they go to Central Park and then they travel home. It's a one day trip. This is their annual.
Great. Mike? Thank you. Thank you. Any comments?
I'm gonna make a comment.
Oh, lord.
Zip your lip, lady. I haven't seen you volunteer on this. I just want to remind everybody how absolutely amazing this trip is and how much the students get out of it. And it's not just about the day, but seeing what creativity the amazing Jane Baker pulls out of these students is this is why she got our educator of the year. So this among a billion other things that we never could articulate all of them. However, it's an amazing trip. That's my comment. Everyone should volunteer for it. I get up every day at four thirty, Mike, so it's not a big deal.
All right, let's keep it moving.
I told Jane that I would volunteer and I was never called upon.
Okay, next is acting on a three hundred dollar donation from West Falmouth Society of Friends to the UN Club.
Yes, the advisory Danielle Lessig is making a three hundred dollar donation for our UN, the UN, in case we don't know, the Model UN is a student organization at the high school. They do things that simulate the United Nations, allowing them to research global issues. They practice their presenting skills, critical thinking skills. The students, it's it's an awesome program. So anyway, the money's going to the Model UN.
Mike, you want it? Thank you. Oh, everybody wants a second. All in favor, say aye. There you go. Okay, and last is a donation of microscopes, so supplies.
Yes, so Mr. McCall has a summer house in Falmouth and those microscopes were originally purchased for a laboratory at Boston University. However, due to the delay in the laboratories opening, the microscopes became obsolete in the meantime. So but they will, they are not obsolete for us. They are excellent, like, microscopes. Chris Brothers is very excited. And then what, how this will work is that the high school, we get those, will look at the inventory of our current microscopes and we'll be able to be able to use those in the other schools. And so, yeah, so great. Hope we accept the microscopes from this very generous gentleman.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you, Mr. McCall.
I know, this is amazing. Okay, now we need an explanation.
Yes, thank you. All right, so the policies that we're ready to see are to to vote on tonight. And Policy Subcommittee did not think that we needed to have a first read because you've already seen them and voted on them. But here's what happened. This is reverting back to our policies regarding Title Nine that were updated in 2022 to comply with the 2020 regulations. So on January ninth, twenty twenty five, the Federal Court ruling, January twentieth, twenty twenty five, the Presidential Executive Order, and the February fourth, twenty twenty five, U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights Dear Colleague Letter vacated the Title Nine Regulations that were effective August one of 2024, of which we adopted. So now we're, all we're doing is reverting back because those are vacated or back to our revised policies that we revised in 2022 so that we comply with the 2020 Title Nine Regulations.
So we're going back in time.
We're going back in time, but luckily we'd already done our due diligence at the time. So we just really need to re-adopt the policies that we had.
But any questions before we just take them one at a time?
One at a time?
We have to do them one at a time. Oh, we can do a miserable, because we've done it before.
I'm making a motion to approve all four as a whole.
Any last comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Great.
Now, that was a vote to take them together. I think you have to vote on them again. I think you
You're right, we do. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstractions? Thank you. Good question. Appreciate that.
Okay. All right, update. So here I've got some exciting things. So do you remember, I don't remember, I think it was the last time we were at Morse Pond School and there was a group of students that the No Place For Hate and they came and they presented and they were so wonderful. But the staff student group has grown and they've been doing lots of activities at Morse Pond. They, this year are doing three assemblies through the year and they're leading the assemblies and I had the pleasure of going. I think it was just last week, my time plan. And it was, it was so wonderful and their whole theme was really engaging with the students because all students got to participate. And it was really getting, it was just thought provoking about what do you think you know of someone when you see them, right? And how much more you could, if you just get to know someone, how much more you could learn. And they did the whole analogy of, I'm sure everyone knows the iceberg, right? What's above the surface, right? Is is kind of what you see, but it's below the surface is what you want to get to know. And so they just did a really nice way of encouraging everyone to get to know the real people and make friends and but they did a wonderful job. So I just wanted to to share that the group is strong and they're continuing their work. Yes.
Just a quick question. Is there a, or whom is the teacher who's overseeing? I saw the kids last time, but I don't know who the teachers are.
So Donna Lima and I know Donna Lima is the number one. I'm sorry.
Kathleen Marie is number two.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. So
A real quick comment, the iceberg, you know, I was trying to catch my words about that challenge data time.
Yes.
That was another thing. They taught you how to think about the iceberg, so.
Not well, good. So our our fifth and sixth grade students are talking about it, so are high school. So Jane Baker, and you mentioned, you know, she won the Massachusetts Art Teacher of the Year and it is the amazing Jane Baker, of course, and I agree one hundred percent with that. So I mean, and and the award really goes to recognize the educators who excels in practice instruction, promotion, and celebration of visual art. I personally admire Jane a great deal, her creativity, her skills, dedication to students. I, to your point exactly, when I think of Jane is what she, the students are able to produce through her just encouragement and her teaching. It's just incredible. I, one of the things that she always says is that she's not trying to make artists out of all students, right? That she is trying to teach kids how, another way of communicating, expressing themselves. And a couple of years ago, I was talking to one of the students and I thought for sure the student would go on to higher ed in art. I mean, absolutely beautiful. And she was like, I I'm not interested in doing that. She was actually interested in nursing, which is fine. Great, great profession. Sorry, I just, you know, but but she said that I am always going to have art. It's going to be an outlet for me. And I enjoy, you know, painting and draw, you know, drawing. And so I think that's really important, right? I mean, it's a gift. It's a lifelong gift. So I just there's a little something about Jane. And today is her birthday because I had asked her if she would come because I really wanted to honor a person, but she really deserves to have her birthday celebration with her family. So she said it was okay if I just talked about it.
If you haven't gone to see the art, I asked her about it and she's making a book of all the art and the pitch and the dialogue about how they get that. And I think the book was going to be like four dollars. And that art was absolutely incredible. So if anybody's interested, those books should be available and you can purchase them.
Thank you.
I think we, I wonder if some of those people, remember when she did the the war veterans and the teenagers that their comment, what you heard from both sides of that aisle was, I remember teenagers, I'll never make fun of an old person driving slow again, you know, and the young and the back and forth. And another thing to be noticed is that she is a product of Falmouth High, Falmouth Public Schools. So there you go.
And she is a practicing artist herself too, which I think is, just brings that passion into the students. Also would like to recognize our floating nurse. There's a new recognition from the Massachusetts School Nurses Organization. It's called the Rising Star Award. It's for nurses that are five years or under in the practice. And Emma Butterbrook is in her second year with us. She's a floating nurse. She's she's very skilled, her clinical skills. But one of the things that we talk about with Emma is just how she looks at the old, the the whole child. And one of the things that she she was instrumental in getting the clever closet at the high school. So she actually started that, but I'm definitely looking at the well rounded, the health, health of the town. So congratulations to Emma too. So very glad she got that. The Okay, so the Falmouth High School Jazz Band won silver medal. Very exciting. So they are, they they did a wonderful job and they were just like the best of the best in the area. And so silver is excellent, excellent award. Just congratulations to them. I am going to take a couple of minutes to shout out everyone on that jazz band. For the the sax, woodwinds, we have Liam Costa, Hannah Park, Miles Chase, Han, Hanul Park, Isabella Cabral, trombones, Jonah Goldstone, Evelyn Hiker. By the way, Evelyn is an eighth grade student that plays in the jazz band at high school. And trumpets, Elijah Drury, Bofi Versek. I know how to say it. Can you say it? Thank you. Okay, so it's always that little syllable that catches me up. Thank you so much. Nate Burnham and Nate is also an eighth grader in the high school jazz band. It's pretty awesome, isn't it? In the rhythm section, we got Oliver Day, Brody Costa, Renan Estes, Colin O'Brien, Robert Simpkins, Jack Beardsley, and Victoria, Victoria Cabral. So what an awesome, so I'm just excellent. And the evening of jazz is coming up on Saturday, April fifth at the Kunemessa. It is a wonderful evening. So you can get your tickets and you can go hear our jazz band. Two students at Falmouth High School. This is pretty amazing too, Macy Chase and Marisol Jersik. Artwork was selected to compete in the National K twelve Ceramic exhibition. They're going to be in Salt Lake City that will be on display at the National Council on Education for the Ceramic Arts Conference. Their art is going to be seen by tens of thousands of people, artists, educators from around the world. It's absolutely amazing. So here is a small picture of their two pieces. I don't know if you haven't seen it, but I'll pass that around. So that's, it's very exciting.
Can we just add one more thing? Marisol is actually going to be going to the University of Utah at Salt Lake.
Oh, really? That's great. That is pretty exciting. What are the chances? What are the chances? That's awesome. Okay, so you already heard about the robotics from our student liaison and from Dr. Harris. So I'm not going to get into that, but I do want to say congratulations to our Regal Seagulls and their robot Lulu. So again, a little update on East Falmouth and T-Ticket. So again, a little update on East Falmouth and T-Ticket, Principal Harry. Process, East Falmouth is still in their round one interviews. And T-Ticket will be beginning their round one interviews in just a few short weeks. A little bit on composting. So the Town Water and Sewer Advisory Committee has approached me to add another composting location. This one is going so well. And so they would like to add it at East Falmouth at the end of the parking lot near the tech pub bins. The Village of East Falmouth Association has approved it. And so we're, we're good with it. We're going to do the same thing as we did here, do it on a pilot. So we'll be checking it more regularly in the beginning. If everything's going well, it could be a permanent composting for the East Falmouth. Locations. We are going to offer a bullying workshop again. So Attorney Mary Gans is going to hold another one. It's been a minute since we've done one, April 15th at 6:00 PM by Zoom. So hopefully more people can participate. And she'll just be discussing bullying, cyberbullying, talk about the Massachusetts law, what distinguishes between bullying and just a conflict, a pure conflict. And, and then how the school district responds to bullying claims and our process to that.
Is that Mary?
Yeah. And just a few, in March, there's just a few things coming up that you also may want to consider going to. Well, last night I went to the third grade at Mullen Hall. They're just adorable. Their, their course and their recorders, they're so good. We already heard about on tomorrow night is the art show reception at the high school. Also tomorrow night is the all bands night. We already heard about the steam fair, but I want to give a plug. We again have over 30 community scientists and members participating. There'll be lots of things set up. We're going to have the, the big whale that you can walk through will be there. There's, you know, going to be the live horseshoe crabs on display. You can look at plankton, other microscopes. There's a lot of fun things to do for the full family. Just bring the whole family out because there's just so many fun things. And then I just want to shout out to our, our Falmouth, again, amazing Falmouth community. There's going to be over $9,000 in scholarships and awards presented as well. On March 19th, it's all coral night. And the 20th, we already talked about the, the soup for the soul is on the 20th, flyers included. March 22nd, the FEF Gala. I think I've mentioned it before, but I'm going to, another plug. Great, great event. Hope to see you there. And then the next thing in March, on the 29th and 30th is the Lawrence School Play and they're doing Frozen. And they do an awesome job. Any questions for Lori? The point, March 29th and 30th. Quick on the jump. Okay. Next up is, thank you, thank you for that. Next up is approving the minutes from February 11th. Their motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second? A second. Any edits or?
Yeah. I don't know if it's important enough to change, but it's important enough to be mentioned.
Okay. It should be easy to search for and find.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you. Anything else? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Yeah. So on the subject of minutes, and since we have the opportunity, since Sharon is not here, because she would probably be very upset if she wasn't, I brought it up. You know, I have a lot of concerns about the amount of time that she is spending on records requests this year. You know, we've heard a lot of them. And so, I mean, obviously she's still doing her minutes and getting things done. But I, it is a concern I have and I'm one of the other things and a million other things. You know, I'm wondering if, I mean, does she need help? If we're going to keep at this pace, it just seems to me that this pace of records requests and the degree of them seems far more than we have ever had in my tenure. And if we need, God help us to spend money to address it. I don't know if we can, if, if. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but it's a concern right now.
The volume of records requests has, you know, virtually doubled over the last couple of years. I think it was 28 two years ago. It's 57 so far this year. And, and it's, and it's an enormous font of energy to try to respond to these record requests. And then if there's an issue, you go back and forth and try to sort through the issue. And so, you know. I mean, hiring staff members could be an expensive. You know, position to do. Probably, you don't know with the long term. You know, if that need will continue at that moment. So it may not be the right way to go. But I mean, I'll just say, be honest with you, that this is the best train on this administration. If these records were kept, requests.
Yeah. Would it be possible to quantify the staff hours that have been devoted? And cost per hour and the cost for photocopying? Just to get a sense of what the cost of the, this unusual amount of requests has cost us?
I thought about it. I, I don't know. I mean, that's a Lori decision, but I, I thought about it and then I was like, oh my God, I can't ask them to do one more thing. That was my first thought. Like, okay, it's trying to create that. Could we, you know, estimate? I mean, you, you know, of our typical requests that you get annually, you know, a lot are from businesses that where our bids may be coming up. And so they want, even if they request for information, that's a fairly simple one, right? You're, you're grabbing, you know, information of our current contract, right? And you're, and you're sharing that. That doesn't take, you know, other typical records requests are if, if, if someone's doing research or they're writing an article, you know, they may be asking all districts in a region or across Massachusetts. And it's usually data that's already there that you just download. And, you know, and you're sharing again, it's not a lot. It's, it's when, you know, there's, it becomes, you know, if there's a curriculum, you know, and we have to, you know, the number of people, not just Dr. Tellier, but let's, let's say it's about history. And now we're involving our department head and we're researching, you know, the depths of what they want to know around a unit or whatever. That, that takes, that takes a long time, right? So it's not as easy as saying we had 57 and we can average two hours for it, right? One might take two hours, one may by the, multiply it by three people, 10 hours each. You see what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm just trying to explain some of that. So, you know, Sharon gets, she's our records request officer. She gets the records in. She very rarely, unless it's one of those datas where she can just pull down the data and do it. It goes to other people and sometimes it requires multiple people. And they're actually gathering, they're trying to make sense of what it is, you know, that's being asked. And sometimes that puts another strain of trying to figure it out. On certain level of the records request, if it's not straightforward, then Attorney Gans is involved. And now we have hours for her to come here and pull records and to look at them. Or to review what another person has pulled. And, you know, and did we answer it? Another one that takes quite a bit of time is when someone asks for all emails between this person and this person for, you know, this 30 days or, you know, this 15. And then now IT has to, because no one's going to get set and see if they can find every email, right? So IT is involved on the backend pulling all of them. And sometimes, no joke, we have gotten stacks like this because you know what happens? Within all of those, you get, you know, there's all kinds of vendors, you know, that, that might be in there. Or the chains, right? So it's repeat, 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 but you have to go through all of them. So then it comes back to having to go through this. Do, you know, which ones included, which, because there's rules. That's definitely when Mary Gans is involved, right? Going through which one, you know, because there's the rules. Some can be included and have to be redacted. Now we're redacting. You know, I'm just saying like, so it, it just depends on the number. And I don't know, like looking at that and just the number of time we would take of looking at each one and trying to guess the amount of hours. I know, I don't need to have my back to you.
No, it's fine.
Yes, I know. So I, we can try. I'm just saying that it's not as straightforward as being able to.
Okay. Well, I was just, thought I was just worried about Sharon, but evidently I'm worried about everybody now.
There, there is a cost.
And my concern is, is this taking time away from people who could be better be working in terms of student learning and education.
Away from kids.
You know, I know, but taking away from people who should, you know, have other responsibilities that can't get to it. How much it costs, yes, is important. How it overwhelms Sharon, yes, that's important. But I'm very concerned about students and their learning and that should be our focus. If this is taking time away from people who could be doing other things for students, that's a problem.
Okay, Mike.
Point of order. This isn't on the agenda. It's, we should discuss this as we are now.
Okay, we can move on. I think we've shared our, our concerns related to our secretary. She deserves it. Committee reports. Anybody got anything to report? Yeah.
The tech committee met around March 5th. And we, they, not me, they were discussing changes that Google made to how they manage privacy for YouTube. And so this came through on March 1st to affect all school districts in Massachusetts. And in listening to the conversation, it seemed like teachers were not prepared. And so all of a sudden, the content they were going to provide during their classes was blocked. You couldn't go to YouTube anymore. There was a big thing that popped up and said, you can't go to this site because it was gathering information about students off of their personal Chromebooks. All of a sudden, that policy changed. And so teachers were in the moment trying to strategize ways to embed the content into slideshows so that they could give it to the kids. And, you know, like, hold on, everybody, does that work? You know, so it was kind of frantic. Seems like last week was a struggle for a lot of people trying to figure out how to do a workaround on that. And so the meeting was trying to make instructional information for teachers to show them how to embed. Sonya was there, but how to embed the content that they need for their curriculum into slides so that you're not going to the website to YouTube. You can watch it separately. There was some conversation about wanting to have a, like a resource library of pre-curated videos so that teachers don't have to go through a pre-screen, a whole bunch of things. But you could just go for your subject material and find some pre-approved videos and put that in. And then there was a lot of conversation about what tools in our repertoire this will affect and how, how you would have to embed videos for all those different applications. That took up most of the time. We had a short conversation at the end about 3D printing, updating materials and maybe getting new devices for the higher level computer classes for the kids to do more, you know, detailed work than the machines they have now. And also about cell phones and sort of an epidemic that has shifted from high school down to middle school. And now kids in elementary school are getting cell phones. And so one of the teachers in the group that brought that as a conversation topic wanted to kind of intervene. He was thinking with fifth graders and the people in room were all like, oh, no, no, it starts in third grade. You have to, you know, talk to your parents, first grade, whatever. It's just smartphones going to younger and younger kids. Concerned about the impact on student mental health and on academics and, and the fact that the phones are having its lives. And sort of a peer pressure angle. It was an interesting meeting. I think they've resolved how to get YouTube back into the curriculum.
Thank you. Yeah.
I think we all received today a email from MASC Division 7 in regards to a roundtable discussion that's going to be held on Monday, March 31st at 6:30 PM. I've signed up for it. I would suggest others as well, because the topics are just what we're talking about this evening in regards to with many difficult decisions school committee members have to make, what are the best practices for dealing with public outcry? With the influx of emails, social media accusations, requests for comments from the press, et cetera. That we're going to have a roundtable discussion. So.
I signed up already.
Okay, great. Well, if some people can't make it, maybe we can get an update from you guys. Thank you.
Henry, did you want to update on the DI committee?
Yeah, I just, the DI, the committee got together and the, the letter from administration about staying the course was the main topic. And they were impressed by the letter and impressed by where, how, the impact on students and on DI and their, and how it impacts students. And then stories came about, about how parent, how family members, how their impact. And I, I felt like there were great stories that should be shared. And the, the idea is like this, at the end of the year, we're just talking about impact on families. And it would be great that next year, there'll be family members that'll be able to tell their stories, DI stories, and have this discussion instead of like educators, this is what families, talking to families. And so the, the, the call is if there is someone that's passionate about DI, a family member that's passionate about DI, that they would contact me and you can start working on maybe a, a nice forum that families talk about, families talking to families about equity. Things like that.
Any other, any member please? Great. Any requests for?
Yep. Okay, so some staff mentioned this and we've had letters from parents about including staff input when we do the evaluation, superintendent's evaluation. I looked at the Jesse background for evidence gathering and staff input is included there. So I'm asking the subject evaluations of the committee to give the school committee guidance on incorporating staff input.
Okay.
So I know, I know you have to have a meeting about this.
Yep, fair enough. Any last things?
The only update I have that we didn't get to is to make sure that the people who are assigned to each goal, goal one, goal two, goal three, are the school committee goals that we set for the year are working along, making progress. Goal two people started our work. And I, I can't remember what date I said we were going to have it on our agenda where everybody, where each goal gives an update. I can't remember if I said it was March or April, but I'll look and resend it. So that we can make sure that we're keeping each other on target for that.
Yeah.
Would you be able to, I think I missed that meeting.
You did be assigned you to something.
Would you be able to send it to me? It's just like, no, what?
Yeah, sorry. We.
No, no, no.
We, we assigned you. We, we just put you on all of them because, you know, you weren't here to defend yourself. So. Okay, that's it. Motion to adjourn. Oh, you got, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Just a request based on the NASDAQ report and trying to use data-driven decision-making. I would, I'm asking for an agenda item to rescind navigating the future as it does not go with any of the NASDAQ.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I wasn't looking up.
Have some explanation or description of how our exit interviews are conducted? And also the HR situation. I know we have a little bit of an update on that, but it's not.
Okay.
And then Kelly, if I could, one more, preschool and kindergarten enrollment for the last five years by, by district and broken down into school. I'd ask that. I just, remind you, that's that last month and I'd like to get that as we go.
I think that's.
Can you say it?
It's in the report.
It's in the report, the last five years. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, that was, there were a couple. The evaluation one will get kicked to evaluation, rescinding navigate in the future and a presentation on HR. If other people want those, just. Well, that's HR.
Oh.
So I was lumping them together. Yep. If other people want those, please reach out and let me know. And. And motion to adjourn? Second, thank you, all in favor? Aye, we're adjourned.